Good evening and welcome to the Monday, May 20th meeting of the Radnor Township Board of Commissioners. Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a lot of recognitions to do tonight. But first, quickly, I'll make notice that we met in executive session immediately preceding this meeting. All of us you see here, Commissioner Abel and Commissioner Booker are absent this evening, and we discussed legal issues. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like to pull from the consent agenda this evening? Is there anything staff would like to pull from the consent agenda? Anything the public would like to pull from the consent agenda this evening? Okay, may I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
All those in favor of the consent agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes five to nothing with Commissioner Booker and Commissioner Abel absent. All right, recognitions. First, before we get into the recognitions, I promised Marty Costello that I would remind everyone, the Memorial Day Parade is this Monday. It begins at 9:45. It starts at the, down by the Lincoln Financial Building, and heads down Lancaster Avenue to South Wayne. So everyone, get there early, get your spots along the street. And it will end up at the War Memorial, the Radnor War Memorial, right across from the Township Building, or the School District Administration Building. They're on South Wayne Avenue, and there will be a ceremony to honor all of our, all those who have given their lives in service to our country. All right. Okay, the first recognition we have this evening is for the Radnor Enhancement Community Trust. Is Mr. Sontabek here?
He's not here.
Oh, great. Please come. How are you? That's okay. Hi. Lisa Nebraska, your name is?
Hi, Robin Sontabek.
Hi, Robin, how are you? I think we went to high school together.
Did we?
I think so. Okay, so this is in recognition to the Radnor Enhancement Community Trust. For those that are not aware of what that trust is, I am not exactly sure when they were formed, many, many years ago, I believe.
Eighty-eight, nineteen eighty-eight.
Thank you. So nineteen eighty-eight, and they are a group of business leaders and community members who came together to put together a fund where they used to beautification, do beautification in the community, specifically the Wayne Business District, and to, you know, enhance Radnor and keep it a wonderful place. So they recently gave us a very generous donation to do work up in the Wayne Business District, to do beautification there. And so at the corners, you'll see new plantings and, you know, new plantings, new plantings. They'll be making it look much nicer than it does now. The stones have been removed, so there'll be some really, it'll look really nice. And they also have agreed with the remainder of the money that's left in the trust to repair the clock that's up in Wayne on South Wayne.
Very nice.
Yeah. So we would like to present this beautiful key.
He's gonna be shocked.
Is he gonna be shocked?
Because I don't think, I think he was expecting a plaque, like a little tiny picture or something. I don't know where he's gonna put it in his office, but I guess we'll find someplace.
We will find somewhere.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much for recognizing his efforts.
Well, and also Steve Bages, and there's another gentleman, I forget.
Probably Mike McCoy.
Yeah, yes. So we have one for them as well, for each of them as well.
Thank you. I just want to say that my dad was a commissioner for twenty-three years, and it was one of the joys of his life. I think my mom appreciated that every Monday and every other Wednesday, he wasn't home, which is, was a good thing. But he gave his heart and soul to this township, and as a result of his life experience, I'm now a township commissioner in the town that I live in. And I've learned quite a bit from my dad. So thank you so much for recognizing him, and I'll make sure he gets it later tonight. Okay?
Thank you. Thanks. Okay, next, I think, Tammy, are we up to the extravaganza?
Good evening. This is a recognition for Villanova University, and tonight Patrick Tracy and J.J. Brown are here, so I'll invite them to come on up. This is a recognition of them, Villanova University, lots of people actually at Villanova University, the Office of Government Affairs, Chris Kowalski and Laura Waggoner, as well as the Department of Athletics, and Brian Anderson. The Spring Extravaganza Event, in case you don't know, is a series of egg hunts at Villanova University Stadium. So for all the kids and all the families that take part in the event, they love it. And the look down from up above, when you see all the kids on the field, running around, scattering for the eggs, is really just an amazing sight to see. So this year's event, we were fortunate to have great weather, doesn't happen every year, we end up canceling a lot and postponing a lot. So we had tremendous success. We had thousands of people in attendance, it was amazing, folks were raving, and we certainly couldn't do it without your support and all your help. These guys were here on site early in the morning, with all of the strenuous setup and everything that goes into the event, all the cleanup, all the logistics and everything, and we just want to say thank you for six of nine years of the event, and hopefully many, many more. So thank you so much, we appreciate it.
I just want to say, I'm really happy that Villanova, like, as a representative of the student body of Villanova, oh. This is better. So as a representative of the student body, I'm just really happy that we have this opportunity to have this, like, really great relationship with the township, and I'm really excited to keep on keeping on.
Great.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Thanks so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Appreciate you being here. Have a good day.
Okay, next, I think we have Officer Pinto. Are you gonna? No? I'm doing it? This is, this is Saint John, yeah. You're gonna do this?
No, ma'am, I'm standing here with the, I'm with the gentleman this time.
Okay. All right, sorry, little technical difficulties here. So the Radnor Township Board of Commissioners gave a proclamation a couple weeks ago. We, I had the pleasure of attending along with our Superintendent Flanagan, Officer Pinto, Lieutenant Dietrich, and several of our officers. The Saint John AME Church, one hundred and thirty-first anniversary. It was, it was wonderful, it was a wonderful day, there's a lot of fellowship, a lot of great community spirit. Is there anyone here representing Saint John's this evening?
Saint John's.
Oh, there you are. Come up, Reverend Howard. Oh, all of you, come up. Come up. I should have, I should have known you were here when I heard a baby crying. Can't see. So the Board of Commissioners gave this plaque to Saint John AME Church. For those of you who don't know, Saint John AME is over on Highland Avenue, yes?
Yes.
And this is Reverend Howard, and his lovely family, Vanessa and the baby, and your lovely daughter.
And nephew Jamie.
And several parishioners as well, you want to introduce yourselves?
Officers.
Officers, go ahead, introduce yourselves.
John F. Parkerson.
Juan Coke.
Diane Lee.
Here you are, sir.
Here you are.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Art Parkerson, Senior.
Art Parkerson, Junior.
Angela Brimage.
Shelton Brimage.
Josh.
All right. Well, thank you all for being here. I think it's, it's wonderful, obviously a family-oriented, and the other thing that Saint John's does is a lot of, a lot of good work for our community, and led by Reverend Howard and his beautiful wife, they do the, oh my gosh, it's, you name the community, yes, block party.
Third year this year.
Yes, and what day is it again, Reverend?
August 24th.
August 24th.
August 24th, on Highland Avenue.
Mm-hmm. It's a wonderful event, I know I've been, and Commissioner Abel has been there, and Commissioner Farhi, it's, it's a wonderful event. So I'm gonna go ahead and quickly read this proclamation. Whereas Saint John AME Church Wayne was founded in eighteen eighty-eight, and whereas Saint John AME Church's impact since the creation in eighteen eighty-eight, their church has been able to make positive impacts in the lives of their congregation and local neighbors. Their impact stretches far and wide and impacts countless families and the Radnor community. Whereas Saint John AME Church goals are simple, nurture and enhance the community where we live. Their ministry is dedicated to creating change in many different parts of the surrounding community, in the hopes that they can transform lives, one person at a time. And now, therefore, the Board of Commissioners of Radnor Township celebrate the one hundred and thirty-first anniversary for Saint John AME Church, resolved, it was, on the twenty-seventh day of April, twenty nineteen. So congratulations to you all, and thank you, thank you for your contribution.
Thank you. Yeah, just a few, not just a few.
Can we get a picture with everyone? Everyone come on.
Come on, everyone get close. Sunday mornings, get close.
Jen, get in.
Squeeze in.
I'm sorry.
Oh, wait, we gotta get Matthew out the stroller.
Oh, get Matthew out.
That's little Matthew Lee Howard.
Oh, you want the plaque?
Look, he's ready. Look, you're holding the plaque? There you go.
Oh, yeah.
It's awesome, yes, yes. And, yeah, on behalf of myself and my wife, my better half for certain, and the officers and members of Saint John AME Church of Wayne, I just want to thank the township for their support in all that we do. Many of you also know I'm the Senior Police Chaplain as well, and for the township of Radnor, it's been an honor to serve all of you, and it's been an honor to serve, you know, God's church and the community. So we thank you for this. It's been a hundred and thirty-one years that Saint John AME Church of Wayne has been on the main line on the corner of West Wayne and Highland, and I've just been so blessed to be there the last two years. And I'm thankful because those standing behind me, many of them have been there thirty, I don't, I wouldn't say forty, but thirty-plus years, supporting the ministry and the community. So I'm just here as the, as the mouthpiece in the face of the, of the church representing Jesus Christ. But these people behind me do the work. I cast the vision, and they'll tell you, we work hard and we got a lot of work to do. So thank you again, Board of Commissioners, Radnor Police, Chief Flanagan, all the lieutenants, Pinto, Dietrich, that I work closely with as well, we're thankful, and all the Radnor staff, we're thankful, and may God bless all of you. Thank you. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Come back, please, because we, we, yes, I want to make sure, because this state representative here is awesome. I just want to say that because we, we partnered on the Villanova MLK Day, and it was the coldest day of the winter. And we went out there with a group of folks and her staff, and we had hot chocolate, we ran out, we cleaned up all around the Highland Avenue, the bottom portion of it, we went around Vic and Dean's even, we reached over across the street by the Vets' Office, we just were cleaning up. We had many, many Villanova, and I thank the Villanova students who are here, we thank you and the university for your partnership with us, and we did a major cleanup, so thank you.
Thank you. So I'm State Representative Jennifer Omara, and I met Reverend Howard on Martin Luther King Day, and I knew immediately it was one of those relationships that wasn't going to end for a very long time, because we both share a mission of public service. So it's an honor for me to be here tonight to present, present a citation on behalf of the state to Reverend Howard in honor of Saint John AME's anniversary, and my office is very excited. We're now helping plan the block party, we're joining the conference calls each week, and doing everything we can to bring more resources to make that day a great day for everyone in Radnor Township. So on behalf of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, we extend our deepest thank you and congratulations for this great anniversary.
Can we take a picture with the lady? All right, get it. Everyone squeeze in, squeeze in.
Squeeze in, Bill, too.
Yes, please do. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and just a brief moment, thank you for this, this is, this is very special, this is a blessing, and I thank State Representative Jennifer Omara and her office for, one, their partnership, one, their love, and one, their willingness to partner in public service. And we're elated that that is, she is our new state representative of the district, and we look forward to many, many more years and opportunities working together to build the community in unity. Thank you.
All right, so I'm here to participate in our next recognition. So many of you may know that last week was National Police Week, and we here in Radnor Township are very, very lucky to have a police department as dedicated as Radnor Township Police Department. So last week, I was in Harrisburg during National Police Week, but I got to see on Twitter and social media Chief Flanagan and our officers out actually engaging with the community, and I thought that was a really awesome way to celebrate National Police Week, because that relationship is so, so important. So I'm here tonight to thank all of our officers for all the work that you do, day in and day out, for the folks in Radnor Township. On Saturday, I participated in a ride-along with Springfield Police Department, and I'm happy to come to Radnor whenever you'll have me.
No, never mind.
And I was out for a few hours, and I got to listen to the police radio that covers all of Delaware County. And in a matter of five minutes, there was kids on top of an elementary school, reckless driving on Baltimore Pike, a bad accident on State Road, and shots fired in Marple Township, and all this is happening, and the officers are calm and collected, telling me there's not that much going on. And I think that says such a testament to the work that you do. When nine-one-one, we call nine-one-one, we expect someone to be there no matter what's happening, and you answer the call literally no matter what is happening. So thank you, on behalf of everyone here in Radnor Township, we thank you for being there to answer that call, and for all that you do for all of us to keep our communities safe. So please join me in acknowledging. I also brought certificates of recognition for all the officers that are here tonight, and everyone in the police department, as a small token of our appreciation, so you know that your work does not go unnoticed. So thank you very much. So first, we'll begin with Lieutenant Joseph Pinto.
Thank you very, very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next, we have Ryan Collins, and if you want, I can just call them out and then bring them over, I don't know if you want to come up, or come get your moment of fame, you deserve it.
Thank you. That was, I was expecting, tricked me.
Next, we have Officer Michael Fisher.
Thank you very much.
Next, Officer Patrick Jennings.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Officer William Meyer.
Thank you very much.
All right, you're gonna have to help me with this one.
Thomas Mattajasic.
Thomas Mattajasic. I knew exactly how to say that.
Thank you.
Congratulations, thank you. Joshua McCann.
Thank you very much.
Anthony Radico.
Really, it's Matt Radico?
Yeah.
Tell me somehow.
Dylan Royce.
Dylan Royce?
Yeah, and Steve had to go on a call. I'll make sure he gets it.
Oh, and Steve had to go on a call. See, already out there working. So thank you all, on behalf of everyone in Radnor Township and the Commonwealth, as a small token of our appreciation for what you do for our communities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill, thank you.
Ryan.
Thank you.
Go, let's go.
Thank you.
Thank you for entertaining.
Thank you, very much.
Okay, we have two more, and the first one I'd like to invite, Commissioner Clark, will you come down?
Madam President, if I may?
Yes?
I'd just like to thank Representative Omara. As you know, the roads are perfect in Radnor, all these state roads are in such wonderful condition, like Lancaster Avenue, three-twenty, that they're almost mint to shape, it actually looks like downtown Baghdad. But what I would like to say is this representative has gone over, above and beyond, to work with the township side by side against Pendot, who always seems to have not enough money to do this. But it's amazing how they finish under budget when we have to use our tax dollars to subsidize theirs, which we've stopped. I like to say Representative Omara brought a hearing out here to the township, in which we expressed our dissatisfaction with Pendot, but she is not afraid to go against Pendot, and that's very rare for a state-elected official to go against somebody like that. But it's actually after our tax dollars to make sure they're being spent right, so thank you, Representative.
Just add, keep calling, let us know where the problems are. I spent two hours in District Six after that hearing, with a whole list of roads that need to be addressed in Radnor, so I need to hear from you. You've got the best.
Kirk Row.
Thank you very much.
We've got it, it's on the list.
On the list.
It's on the list.
All right, invite Michelle and Dan to come on up, please. All right, thank you for coming in. We wanted to, everyone, this is Michelle and Dan Skolnick of South Wayne, and we wanted to give them a recognition of community support for the Carol H. Axelrod Memorial Blood Drive. And if you don't know, we had the blood drive recently, it's always in early May, and is a very successful packed event. I know in twenty eighteen, I believe, and it doesn't just take place here, it takes place in other locations, I believe you have seven events or so throughout the year? Four? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Well, they, they, last year, I know about, enough blood was collected to help about eighteen hundred people or so, if I remember correctly, and since its inception in two thousand and eight, you've collected enough blood to help about twelve thousand people. Is that, is that right? So it's obviously been very successful, it's growing, it's a great cause, and they really do a great job with it. So with that being said, I want to read the recognition that we're giving them for their hard work with this, and it says over, "In recognition of your dedicated service to the Radnor Township community and the American Red Cross, over the last several years, the Skolnick family has been an example of the great community partners to the Radnor community. Be it known that the Radnor Township Board of Commissioners sincerely appreciates and thanks for your lasting contributions to help make Radnor Township the best place to live, work, play, and do business on the main line." So with that, if we could please recognize them for their contribution to the community. They'll stand here. All right, and, sorry, the other side.
Thank you all very much, we extend a very heartfelt thanks. This blood drive takes place in memory of my mother, who was dependent on blood transfusions while being treated for cancer. And we've made it our mission to try to help other families have more time with their loved ones. So we are so appreciative of everyone in Radnor Township who supports the blood drive, makes it possible for us to hold the blood drive, and just, we, we very much appreciate this recognition as well. Thank you.
Okay, last, last award, can I invite Matt and Jane Golis to come up? I think they are. All right, so, so those of you who don't know Matt and Jane, very dedicated members, volunteers, what is it, so we've got Shade Tree, Parks and Rec, yes?
Planning.
Planning.
No Parks and Rec.
Sorry, no Parks and Rec, all right. Shade Tree and Planning, and Matt and Jane just step up wherever they are needed. And most recently, they have been conducting a tree inventory in Radnor. You know, we are very proud of the, the natural beauty of our community, our wooded areas, our trails, our parks, and Matt and Jane work tirelessly to help protect them and help us make the best decisions about, you know, what we're doing in, in those properties, and how we are preserving them and making them very special places in our community and for our residents. So they have embarked on, been doing this tree inventory, how long have you guys been working on this?
We've started last year, we've done twenty-eight hundred street trees in Radnor. We've started again, because we've got the leaf matter out, so we can tell what we're looking at.
Identify them.
Identify them. And so we, we're around thirty-one hundred trees, and we figure probably around fifty-eight hundred, six thousand will be the total number of street trees that we'll survey. But I just, I also want to thank Bob Zankowski for really helping us out with a really nice app called Urban Forest Metrics, which allows us to do a lot of mapping, condition reporting of the trees, and really speeds up the process, so thank you, Bob.
And I think it should be, so how many trees did you say by the end you will have done, how many?
We think about fifty-eight hundred.
Fifty-eight hundred trees, and it's just the two of them. That's it. Street trees, that's not, but that's just the two of them, so, and when you're done this survey, so what, what kind of information are you giving us with regards to trees?
We're giving you species of trees, condition of those trees, giving you where there's interference with wires and cable.
The most important thing. We've got some data that we can then go to ECO with, so maybe, maybe they can change up their protocol of how they trim and, you know, take care of it.
But with, with the ash, with the ash trees, and, you know, terrible shape, I think it's important to identify the ones that are in the worst case, in worse shape on the streets. So the, the, the app that we have actually will allow us to put together a very specific report that Steve McNellis can use, or to, you know, chase down trees. A lot of trees that we've identified have probably already been dealt with by Radnor, so as we go around, we'll probably do some overlay work this year on last year's work.
Also, not all the street trees are Radnor trees. Some of them are not in the right of way, but they're still trees, the street trees. But we'll, property owners and residents will have data to work with.
Agreed. Well, we are very fortunate to have so many wonderful volunteers, and certainly the two of you exemplify that. So on behalf of the Radnor Township staff and the Radnor Township Board of Commissioners, I'd like to present you with a recognition of community support hereby granted to Matt and Jane Golis, in recognition of your dedicated service to Radnor Township community in leading the tree survey throughout the Radnor Township. Over the last several years, Matt and Jane Golis have been, Matt and Jane Golis have been an example of the great community partners to the Radnor community. Be it known that the Radnor Township Board of Commissioners sincerely appreciates and thanks you for your lasting contributions to help make Radnor Township the best place to live, work, play, and do business on the main line. So Matt and Jane, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
So I think that concludes all of our presentations for this evening, but I think the one thing to note is a common theme this evening is how special our township is, and how wonderful our residents are, and how whether it's for the business community, for the community as a whole, for our religious community and our families, we have so many people here who step up, and our schools, I'm sorry, guys, your, our schools, we have so many people here who step up to make this a wonderful place for all of us to live, and it makes me very proud, and I think my board colleagues as well. So thank you for bearing with us this evening. All right? So I think we, we can take a five-minute break if people want to leave, and then we'll, we'll get to the business of the evening. Thank you.[1746.23] Yeah. I think we're gonna go ahead and get started again. If I could get all the commissioners back to the dais, please? Yeah. So, um, thank you all, and thank you for all who joined us this evening for the recognitions. Certainly it was a nice way to start the meeting. All right, so I will now go ahead and entertain public participation. So all those who are here to speak, please come to the, we welcome you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Patty Barker. I live in the Garrett Hill section of Rosemont, and I am the former chair of the Garrett Hill Coalition. The Garrett Hill zoning district ordinances were adopted by the Board of Commissioners and became Radnor Township zoning code in October 2009, almost 10 years ago. These ordinances were the end result of a two-and-a-half-year process. It was an unprecedented effort. The ordinances were written by a planner, an architect, a board-appointed steering committee, and the Garrett Hill community with the help of the Radnor Township staff. Literally hundreds of people. The goal of Garrett Hillians was to preserve Garrett Hill as we know it, to ensure development in keeping with that goal. Recently, a developer began building a duplex on Garrett Avenue. This developer met with members of the Garrett Hill Coalition a few times between June 2015 and January 2016. He initiated the meetings, stating he wanted to build a duplex that would conform with Radnor Township zoning and also wanted to be a good neighbor. He submitted a plan to us at that time, and that is the plan that I have right here. It conformed with Radnor Township zoning ordinances and was well-received by the community. He did not begin building the duplex until late 2018. It became clear in January of this year that the building was not in compliance with Radnor Township zoning ordinances. Clearly, the building exceeded the height limitation. Community members stepped forward and alerted township officials to their concerns. Thus began a months-long process to determine and quantify the extent the building was out of compliance with our zoning code. It was not in compliance with regard to height. This building exceeds the maximum height by six-and-a-half feet. Township officials have assured the Garrett Hill community that their goal is to have the builder fully comply with Radnor Township zoning. The builder was issued a stop-work order. That order has since been rescinded based on the understanding that the builder is to submit plans to resolve the compliance issues. My goal in speaking with you this evening is to alert you to what's happening in Garrett Hill and to request that the board support the Garrett Hill residents, Bob Zinkowski, Steve Norcini, and township staff in our quest to require that the builder bring the building into full compliance with our Radnor Township zoning ordinances. I want to thank you all for your service, and I want to especially thank Bob Z, Steve Norcini, and their staffs for their support. Thanks.
Good evening.
Sarah Pillling, 29 Garrett Avenue. I have on my Ready for 100 hat tonight. I wanted to let you and anyone who's here and anyone who's watching know that the first meeting of the Radnor Township Green Team Task Force to address Ready for 100 will be in this room next Thursday evening, beginning at 6:30. The people who have agreed to be on the task force, and it's not quite complete, we're still looking for a few people, will introduce themselves. And then Jim Wiley from Westchester, who's really the leader in Chester County, will talk to them and to anyone who wants to come of the next steps as we begin this process of developing a one, five, 10, and 15-year goal to avert some of the climate changes that are coming to this, to the township. It's a public meeting, there will be time for questions and answers and public comment. So we hope that the township will embrace this process. It may not be easy, it may not take a very short time, but our plan is due Earth Day 2020. So we have a lot of work to do between now and then. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Bob, can we post, make sure that's posted on the web, Township website?
Sure.
Great, thank you. Sarah, can you make, you'll make sure that the particulars, great, thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening. Jim Yonopoulos, 15 Braxton Road. I've come to just express my concern and, and ask what is actually going on with a zoning continuance that's been granted to Villanova University now at least five or six times. They first appeared on the agenda, the zoning board agenda, sometime last fall or last, maybe it was December the first time. But it was presumably to resolve a conflict between a 1980 law, which indicates that they can only have the lights on in the stadium Monday through Thursday night, and a later resolution, Resolution 2006-05, which I, along with 80 other neighbors, was actually a party That resolution was somewhat more lenient towards the lights, but there were 36 other conditions also attached to that resolution. It was an exchange for them being granted zoning variances to build their fitness center that they, you know, subsequently built. I'm not gonna sit here and, stand here and read all 36 conditions, but I can tell you that most of those conditions were designed to make sure that the use of the stadium for non-Villanova events would be limited to things like charities and not for-profit events, not pro-sports. Before this resolution was approved by this board and by the zoning board and the planning commission, 2003, 2004, Villanova was renting out the stadium for professional lacrosse, professional women's soccer, and it was a nightmare in our neighborhood. So this resolution was designed to give them what they wanted in terms of the fitness center, but to give us the relief we needed. So most of these conditions were designed to prevent that from continuing to happen. And as I said, I'm not gonna read all 36 of them, but I'll just read you a couple so you get the idea. Number 28 is that no fireworks will be permitted for any events at the athletic complex. Number 31, that tailgating will be limited to Villanova University sports events only. Those are just a couple of examples. I'm concerned because they keep getting continuances in terms of resolving this conflict, and I certainly hope that the conditions that are in this resolution will remain in place and remain the law. If changes were made that were allowed, were to allow them to rent it out for for-profit events, first of all, they should be taxed on that. It's not in keeping with a nonprofit organization to be renting the stadium out to make money on pro-sports events. Secondly, it would not be in keeping with this resolution, it would not be in keeping with the quality that we enjoy now in our neighborhood. So I would ask that, you know, for those of you who are aware what's going on with this continuing granting of continuances, I would ask you to consider that. You know, we fought very hard for these conditions. There were 80 neighbors that were a party to this back in 2006. You know, and we're prepared, if we need to, to make sure that our, our rights are continued to, to be defended. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Yonopoulos.
Hello, my name is Martin Caulfield, 4 Hawthorne Lane in Rosemont. Somewhat of a continuance with what Jimmy Yonopoulos' topic. First, I'd like to have, if possible tonight or at the next meeting, an update as to where the refinements or perhaps a rewrite of our lighting ordinance will be. There was a discussion that started with this board a few months ago, and that was passed over to the planning commission, who basically, as I, I'm gonna put it in layman's terms and as concise as I can, it was too technical of a document that was sent to them, and they returned it to the Board of Commissioners in asking for potential next draft. And again, that's what I understood from it. I attended, so that's one request. My other request is an update on the discussions, if not negotiations, between this board and Villanova University on the stadium lights. I attended a zoning hearing board last month, I believe it was, and it was mentioned at that meeting by Villanova's attorney, and perhaps it was the township's assistant solicitor, I don't know if, I don't, it was an attorney for the township, said that there were negotiations going on. And the attorney for Villanova said that there would be a presentation of Villanova's potential handling of this, of the lighting problem and other related issues here at one of the board meetings, Board of Commissioner meetings. So I didn't see it on the agenda for today, and I know that there's still another meeting before June 20th. But at that zoning board meeting, there was, by that board, a request to try to settle this issue with the commissioners. Otherwise, there would be a, there would no be, there would not be further continuances for the zoning hearing. And the zoning hearing would be heard after, or, excuse me, on June 20th. So I'd like to know, is that process moving along? And if so, what are the accomplishments that you foresee for our township, and specifically for the residents that are neighboring Villanova University Stadium? And what do you see as a gain that we'll probably get from this? And then at last, when do you foresee it being done? And I know I came in here with a lot of questions. You don't need to answer them this evening, okay? But I think at the next hearing, it would be proper for us to understand what's going on. What's going on with the zoning, the lighting ordinance? And one of the things with the lighting ordinance, I would say, is make sure that you have in there a definition of light pollution, because pollution doesn't get grandfathered, okay? And, and the second thing is a request for an update of what is going on between our township and Villanova to address these lighting concerns that were brought up, I believe, back in November. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Caulfield. So is there, I, I think we can say that Villanova will be here on June 10th, correct?
Yeah, right, just, just a short sort of status of what's going on. There's an old 1980 zoning hearing board decision. We know what that says. The 2006 decision by the Board of Commissioners was an approval of a land development only with the 36 conditions. None of them are being changed, Mr. Yanopoulos, except number 26, which said they could have the lights on, the tower lights, until midnight. So we're trying to just, everything else stays the same, so you don't have to worry about that. And we're trying to deal with the lights and the old 1980, 1980 decision, which had some lighting standards. And I anticipate having an agreement on the board's agenda, June 10th. Villanova is planning on coming and doing a presentation on their new lights. They made a commitment to replacing the lights, which should keep the lights on their property. But both of those things should be on the agenda, June 10th. And assuming that all gets approved, then that would be presented to the zoning hearing board on June 20th. And I'm not going to give you any more details other than that.
That's fine.
Okay.
I apologize. I forgot an issue that one of our neighbors asked me to present today. That's fine, okay? My neighborhood, Old Oaks, is affected by the tower lights. I spoke to a neighbor across Lancaster Avenue today. His concern is not about the tower lights at all, and he has one of the properties closest to the stadium. His concern is twofold. The first is, at the, at the west end of the stadium, there is a video board, as well as what I would recall a video band. You see them in indoor arenas where they don't have enough height in front of seating to put them in. He claims that this video board and video band are on nearly 24/7. He says that the projection of this light into his property is, makes all other lighting from Villanova pale in comparison. So, and the other thing that he brought to my attention is that there is a very old building, Long Lancaster Avenue, it's the far east end of the Villanova campus. I think at one time it was used for their security. I don't know what it's used for, dining hall or something like that, or conference center reservations. But there's light on that building that projects onto his property, and that there's a parking area to the east end of the stadium that has lights that are unshielded, and the lights carry into the neighboring properties. So I know that my focus was on the high and mighty. This is the low and mighty earth, I guess.
I mean, it's just the stadium lights that are in front of the zoning hearing board. I'm sorry, just the stadium lights are in front of the zoning hearing board, so we're going to hopefully address that, June 10th, and then in front of the zoning hearing board on June 20th.
Okay. And I know this isn't supposed to be a discussion, but I'd like to go back to my first request. Put in your lighting ordinance what light pollution is, and you won't have to address one-offs every time someone comes and talks to you about light pollution. Set it at what is an acceptable standard. I gave some examples of lighting ordinances to you in the past. If you want additional copies, I can get them for you. But if you define that, there's no need to negotiate with any offender. They're breaking the law. If they don't comply, you can fine them to a certain degree, but you don't have to do one-offs. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Caulfield.
Marty, if you want to have your neighbor email me offline, then we'll go from there. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Caulfield. Thank you, Mr. Rice, for your answer, and I hope the neighbors know they have a strong advocate in Commissioner Farhi when it comes to lighting issue. Good evening, Roberta.
Good evening. Roberta Winters, 326 Williams Road, and I would just like to reaffirm our commitment to having the commissioners look at light throughout the township. It's not a Villanova issue. Those of you who live in Wayne, those who live elsewhere, know that light is an issue, and I believe the league has provided forums and others, opportunities for people to find out more about things that can be done to help everyone in Radnor. The second thing I would like to do is to thank all of the candidates who are running for office in Radnor Township for providing information to the league's Vote 411 website so that people who will be voting tomorrow, and I hope that's all everyone here, will be able to find information about the candidates and make good choices. Also, the Delaware County Board of Elections and County Council is having a Voting System Expo, June 6th, at the Aston Township Community Center in Aston, and I would encourage everyone who is concerned about voting and election security to check out those voting machines. Thank you so much, and we hope to see you at the polls.
Thank you, Dr. Winters. Is there any other public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, we will move on. Thank you all for, for being here this evening. Okay, on to Ordinance 2019-06, introduction, approving a lease agreement between the township of Radnor and Willow's Park Preserve. Yeah, I get, is there someone who's going to introduce this from the staff? Uh, Mr. Rice?
As the board will recall, there's been a couple meetings over the last several months regarding updating, revising, changing the existing lease, which the board approved by ordinance last year, I think June of last year. The WPP recently proposed another alternative to the township in terms of leasing of the property. The new proposed lease and what's on the board's agenda would establish an initial 25-year term with an automatic renewal of three additional years. The financial aspects from the original lease have changed substantially. This lease imposes all the interior renovations on the WPP. As they raise money, they have money on hand, they have funds on hand, they would go through the normal process, seeking township permits, and do what improvements they propose to do on the mansion building. The township had allocated for this project, originally it was contemplated the money would be pooled, the donated money, the township money would be pooled, there would be one large construction contract bid out. That has totally changed. That was a proposal that came from the WPP. The proposal now is that they will pursue whatever contracts or projects, improvements they intend to do there. They're looking for the township to use their allocated money for infrastructure, which would be water, sewer, to the building, whatever would have to be done to upgrade it. I know Steve has done some analysis of it. Possibly, I mean, I think there'd be some paving, some road improvements in there. So they are proposing to move forward in that fashion. This lease spells that out. I know that the board, some of the board members have some additional questions. One item which, since this lease was placed on the agenda, that just to bring to the board's attention, I had attached to it a map, sort of an overhead view, which shows a leased area highlighted in red, and I think that came from Steve Norcini. And the council for WPP, who is here, Evelyn McGravy, indicated to me that WPP would like to have the original map to the original lease, which shows essentially the area, the mansion itself, and then the area around the mansion as the leasehold. That was part of the original lease. When WPP presented the new lease, there was no map. So there needs to be discussion about the, the map. The original map, as I said, showed the court, the patio areas, the courtyard areas. I think we're not talking about the grotto area anymore at all, but other than that, that original map would have to replace this Exhibit B that is in front of you tonight. So that's one change. I know that Willow's Park Preserve is interested in seeing, and this is up before the board for introduction. This is not up for enactment tonight. Assuming this gets introduced, it would be advertised by ordinance because it's a lease in excess of three years under the charter, and it would come back at your next meeting. So that's, that's where we are. Substantial change in the, the overall financial structure of how this was discussed over the past eight or nine months to proceed. It's different now with the nonprofit Willow's Park Preserve taking the lead on doing the improvements. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Rice. I know we have several members of the Willow's Park Preserve here. Would you all like to speak? Please, Evelyn?
Sure.
Welcome. Thank you for being here. Thank you all for being here.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Evelyn McGravy, and I represent the Willow's Park Preserve, and I have since their incorporation almost two years ago. Really want to thank the Board of Commissioners for having us here tonight, for introducing this ordinance. I want to thank your township solicitor, John Rice, for the work that he has done on this up to this date. He's really worked very well with me in trying to get this lease into a position where we can really memorialize this public-private partnership between Radnor Township and the nonprofit WPP. I'd also like to thank Steve Norcini and Bob for their help and assistance, and the three commissioners who joined us at a meeting a few weeks, or a week or two ago, Commissioner Lark and Commissioner Nagel and Commissioner Booker. What I want to kind of add to, John, he did a really great job of kind of explaining the change from what we were looking at approximately a year ago to now, is really kind of changing how we look at this private-public partnership and memorializing what was originally contemplated when the WPP was formed two years ago, which was the WPP stepping in to really try to relieve and alleviate the township's burden in renovating or improving or altering or repairing this township asset. And the purpose behind all of that, it's a means to an end to really create what the WPP's true charitable mission is, which is providing a community resource, a community hub for programs for Radnor residents for generations to come. The necessary improvements and repairs, they now hope that within this lease agreement to take on and take that burden away from the township from having to make those. They're looking to have them entirely privately funded, with the exception, as John pointed out, of the utility service infrastructure that would go up to the entrance of the leased premises. It would not include anything within the leased premises. As John also stated, one of the things that would need to be clarified tonight, there was obviously some miscommunication in the map that was attached to this revised lease agreement. The footprint that the WPP envisioned and I believe had always been a part of the conversation with Radnor Township is the original map that was attached to the original lease agreement of a year ago. So I do have copies of that. I don't have color copies. If you need that original footprint, I can provide that for you. So that would just be one change that we would be looking to see, to have that original map included as Exhibit B as opposed to the one that's presented to you tonight. Any questions? I'm absolutely here to entertain them.
Thank you, Ms. McGravy. We appreciate you being here. All right, well, first, before we discuss, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the introduction of Ordinance 2019-06.
So moved. Oh, I'm sorry. Did I steal your thunder?
Oh, okay.
So I, I've spoken with a couple of you guys on, on this, and I think that we all have at least a few minor changes. My concern is that it's not going to end up passing today as written. I'd rather not have that be a logjam. So I'm going to move, I think it would send the wrong message, because I think we're close to a final lease. I just don't want this to fail. So my suggestion would be that we table this until the next meeting, and then we can have worked out between John and the board a final draft that we'll just sail through instead of negotiating here and now.
So are you making a motion to table?
Yeah, sorry, I should have said the magic words. I'm moving to table.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
All right, so there is a motion to table and further discuss and the intent to bring it back for our next meeting? Okay. All those in favor of the motion to table, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes five to nothing with Commissioner Booker and Commissioner Abel absent. So I think what we will do is we commit to talking with our solicitor, bringing back to you all the changes that, the few changes, and then certainly incorporating the new map, and having something that we can put on the agenda for June 10th for consideration? Okay. Could you please come up? I'm sorry.
I just have a question. Do you have two meetings in June?
Yes, we do.
So then we'd be voted on the 24th, hopefully?
Uh, yeah, well, if it, if it's introduced as an ordinance at the next meeting, can we, do we vote in June? How long does it have to advertise?
10 days, correct?
10 days, okay.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, thank you all. Thank you very much.
Madam President, if I may ask, I know that the Parks Board has looked at all these agreements over the years. I'd ask if the board would consider sending this to Parks Board for their review and input, which I believe they meet on June 13th?
So then how would that input the vote then on June 24th? If Parks and Rec is going to be reviewing it on June 13th?
John, can you assist us with that?
Well, you would, if you're going to introduce this on June 10th, and it would be advertised for your next meeting, two weeks after that. I mean, the Park and Rec Board would be in between those two dates. I don't know, I don't know what input, I mean, this is a lease agreement, this isn't a program agreement about what's going to happen there yet.
Right, we actually ran into this last year. If you recall, we had Parks and Rec sort of squeak in on May the 10th, and then we really presented it on May the 14th. So we're looking to sort of move this along, if at all possible.
I'd recommend why don't we send it to the Parks Board? They don't necessarily have to do it in a public forum and seek their input.
Do I have consensus?
And that way we can hold to the 10th and the 24th.
Okay. I would like to hold to that timeline, the 10th and the 24th.
That would be wonderful.
Do we have consensus to send this to the Parks Board for them to review, not necessarily at their meeting on June 13th, but for their consideration? Perhaps they could have their input to us prior to the June 10th meeting if there's anything, and then we could consider it then. Do, is that possible? So if we sent this to the Parks Board, I guess we would have to get our, we'd want to send the, edit the version that we would edit, or the current version?
We could send the current.
The current version to the Parks Board and ask them for their comments maybe by the end of next week? And then we can...
They're just going to review it individually?
Okay.
As long as they're not meeting?
The Parks Board, the people on the Parks Board.
Yeah.
But why?
Individuals on the Parks Board.
Okay. What specifically are they going to be asked to look at, though, comment on, just the term of the lease?
I guess the terms of the amendments, I mean, the, or, yeah.
Okay.
Which is very short and sweet, I believe, so.
That was, that was just my question, what in fact the Parks Board is being asked to look at in terms of the lease agreement.
I believe we would ask them to look at terms, conditions, everything in this agreement. Because I know that, I know staff's comments were not considered in this, in this draft, so, you know, it's the board's decision how you would like to move forward. know, it's the board's decision how you would like to move forward on this.
Mr. Zinkowski, I would think that some of what we're trying to do is address the staff's comments, and that is why we voted to table the, this evening. Is there consensus from the board that we would perhaps send this to the Parks Board for them to take a look at and send us their comments by the end of next week, so they could be incorporated into whatever we bring forward on the June 10th agenda?
So they could be addressed.
Addressed, thank you. Is there consensus that we do that?
Yes.
Okay, we will send it to the Parks Board, and certainly be aware that we are also considering the staff comments that were sent to us as well. All right. Thank you. And we will stick to the timeline of June 10th and for introduction and potential adoption on June 24th.
Mike Antonopoulos, I sit on the WPP board, appointed by you, one of two members. When we last met with the three commissioners, and Bob, and Steve, and I think Bill White, and John, we discussed some of the concerns they had relative to construction, et cetera. It's my belief, you can't address those comments going back and forth with legal comments between the attorneys. The only way that's going to happen is we have to sit down with our people, the staff, and talk specifically about what their concerns are. I don't know what their concerns are. And I'm on the board to represent WPP, but I'm also on the board to represent your interests and the money that you've allocated to make sure it's being properly spent and allocated. I can't do that job as a member, nor can we as a collective group do that if we don't know what the concerns are. I have no clue what they are. We heard what they were, and we, when Steve brought up some things, and I said, "This is easy." I remember these concerns going back way, way back when, when I was before WPP, addressing these same concerns. It's not a difficult lift. It's an easy lift. But if we sit down collectively and we go over them, we'll address them. But it's not going to happen going back and forth between the attorneys. So I just say, you know, between now and whatever, we should sit down, have a meeting with all concern, go over what the issues are, so there are no moving targets, and we'll address them. Pretty simple.
Thank you. Mike, we appreciate that. We appreciate your, your service.
One more thing, I apologize. With sending it to the Parks and Rec, I just want to make sure that we're still looking at that same timeframe, and even with this meeting, considering staff concerns. We did have an opportunity to address, as Mike just mentioned, we did have an opportunity to meet with the staff, address those concerns in the draft. And in fact, in my conversations with the township solicitor, many of the staff concerns were already addressed within this draft revision. So I just, you know, understanding the time really is of the essence of the project's going to continue to move forward, with a lot of interested fundraising initiatives, a capital campaign moving forward for the WPP. So if we can try to stick to that as closely as possible, it really would help ensure the success of this project moving forward.
You have our commitment, that we will stick to the timeline of June 10th for the introduction, and then possible, or we'll vote for possible passage on the 24th of June.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Thank you all very much for being here. Thank you. Okay, on to Crown Castle microcell update. Ms. Hand. There she are. Sorry, I could not see you back there. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Megan Hand, and I live in Ravenscliff. I'm here tonight with a pretty big group of my neighbors back here. So I want to thank them all for coming out, and thank you guys for putting us onto the agenda. We were here on April 8th presenting you a letter stating the opposition of 41 residents in our neighborhood to the small cell proposal. And I explained the underlying rationale for that opposition. In short, degraded aesthetics, troubling safety concerns, and declining property values. This morning, I resent that letter to you. We now have 53 signatures representing a majority of households in our neighborhood. I regret that Commissioner Abel can't be here tonight. However, this issue weighs on us daily, and we thank you for the opportunity to present you some more information about it from our perspective. The small cell proposal is not appropriate for our neighborhood, and as our letter shows, it's not wanted in the neighborhood. It's my understanding that Crown Castle is waiting for direction from the township regarding the scope of their work on this proposal. We're here, once again, to communicate our strong opposition and ask you to give the direction on our behalf to remove Ravenscliff from the small cell proposal. Last week, I called Commissioner Abel to tell him that we reached a majority of residents on our letter, and to ask him if he would consider advocating for our majority position. He declined to do so. He told me, in his opinion, the process must move forward to testing before he will consider our opposition. I want to be clear, our opposition is to the idea of deploying small cell facilities at all, regardless of what the testing shows. It doesn't matter if there are two sites or eight, if the poles are 25 feet high, or if they're 30 feet high. We're fundamentally opposed to a deployment. Therefore, in my view, the testing is an unnecessary step forward in a process overwhelmingly opposed by the impacted community. We know what the cell service in our neighborhood is like, and we know what this technology looks like as well. We understand the benefit, and we understand the costs that come with it. We don't need to see testing results to know that we don't want this deployed. Implementing this proposal would have significant consequences for the residents, and so this is something that weighs on us daily. So I'm here tonight, once again, not only in my individual capacity, but on behalf of the 53 residents signed on to the letter, including a lot of the people here this evening, to appeal to you as our elected commissioners to help us stop this proposal from going any further for Ravenscliff. Thank you for your time and consideration of this matter for us. I think a few other neighbors may want to make a short comment, if you're okay with that.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
My name's Jim Connor, and I've lived in Ravenscliff for 35 years. First, I want you to know that I think Radnor Township is the best township in America, and believe it or not, I actually say that to strangers. So I'm very grateful for the work you do. That's truthful. I'm here to talk about the proposed microcell network. I don't need enhanced cellphone coverage. When I'm in Ravenscliff, I always have two bars. I never get dropped when I pull in, I never get dropped when I leave. And when I'm home, my iPhone automatically switches over to Wi-Fi. I don't have any problems. And when I talk to my neighbors, they feel the same. We're doing just fine. Presumably, there are some people among the 50-plus homeowners in Ravenscliff who would benefit from this project, but it would only be a handful. The biggest issue with microcell networks, I think we'll all agree, is the appearance. Or said in another way, if the networks were invisible, we wouldn't be here tonight. However, they're not invisible. On the other hand, if what's being proposed is a small tower, or a smaller tower, with a light bulb that's to appear to be a streetlight, then I think we have a problem. So I have a simple solution. Install the microcell network in Round Hill, do the same thing in Inverary, and shortly thereafter, Ravenscliff will let you know if we like it and whether we want it. Thus, I stand with Megan Hand, the person who just spoke, and ask that Ravenscliff be excluded from the rollout of this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Lori Copeland, and I live in Ravenscliff. We are one of the newest residents in Ravenscliff, having purchased our home less than a year ago. When house hunting, we fell in love with the neighborhood. It has a uniquely secluded, rustic, safe, quiet feel that we connected with immediately. It has no through traffic, no commercial activity, no above-ground power lines, and no utility poles. The proposed small cell nodes are completely out of character for this neighborhood, for the very same reasons I just stated. Deployment of these nodes would fundamentally alter the look and feel of our neighborhood, not to mention the associated health risks. It is my understanding that small cell nodes are designed for and deployed primarily in densely populated commercial areas. This residential project exists only because Commissioner Abel has asked Crown Castle to make it a project, with good intentions, I know. In researching the subject, I discovered that communities across the country have taken proactive measures to limit small cell deployment to commercial areas and to exclude residential areas, just like ours, neighborhoods that run all utilities underground. Ocean City, Maryland is a prime example. I feel we should be doing the same. It is difficult to understand why this continues to be pursued when we have stated our unified opposition so very clearly. The uncertainty is perplexing and frankly exhausting for our neighborhood. Please, as the elected officials of our township, take action tonight to put an end to this proposal for our neighborhood. Thank you for your time and leadership.
Thank you.
My name is Erica Martin, and I've lived in Ravenscliff. My husband and I have lived in Ravenscliff for near 25 years. So perhaps that's around when cell phones came out. I can't tell you when I got one. I'm not techie. All I can tell you is I never have a problem. And we have friends and family who come to stay with us overnight, from out of state, in-state, and I've never heard anyone say anything about having a problem. So I guess my point is twofold. One, we in Ravenscliff don't see that we have a problem at all. And two, we are very upset by the solution that someone has come up with, and frankly don't want it pushed on us. So thank you for listening. We'd love it here.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Aaron Su. I live in the Ravenscliff neighborhood as well. We moved here two years ago. I agree with everything that's been said, particularly respect to the aesthetic of the neighborhood, love the aesthetic of the neighborhood. And we live in one of the low-lying areas of Ravenscliff. We are impacted by low cell coverage, but we have easy solutions. We have a home line, we have Wi-Fi calling. We are, we, we do not feel it on a daily basis. We don't view it as a problem that needs to be solved. This proposal seems forced on us, and we, we do honestly believe that this is something that the neighborhood does not want, nor do we think it will be a material benefit. And we see serious material risk to our property values, which will be meaningful for us. So, so for us, I'd just like to say, if you want to experiment in other neighborhoods, and those neighborhoods are supportive, fine. Just please let Ravenscliff allow it to be excluded. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Judy Maroos, and I live in Ravenscliff. I live there with my husband and my 11-year-old daughter, Nora. We moved here from Boston a year and a half ago, and we lived in the city in Boston. And when we moved here, we were really drawn to the natural beauty of our neighborhood. We'd be one of the properties that would have a small cell tower in our front yard. And I can tell you that I probably wouldn't have bought that house had I known it. And I really worry, worry for the safety of my family, because I don't know what the health impacts would be. And so I'm against the proposal, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name's Carl Bupp, and I lived in Ravenscliff with my wife Carolyn, our three kids, for nearly 20 years. Kids went to Radnor High School, they all grew up. It's been a great area. Like my neighbors, I am strongly opposed to the testing and deployment of the small cell effort in Ravenscliff. We don't need people who have better coverage while they're driving their cars. Like my neighbor Jim, I have Wi-Fi. I get coverage in my house, get coverage driving home. It's not a problem. We don't need the small cell deployment or testing, so please, spare Ravenscliff, go somewhere else if they want it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Han Boi, and my husband is, would like to be here, but he's on child duty. We are also new to Ravenscliff, and we moved in in 2017. And what drew us to the neighborhood is also the natural beauty, and the landscaping and the neighbors. So this project, we strongly oppose because it will take away what we love the most about Ravenscliff, besides other possibility of health issues. Now, I'm a health provider, healthcare provider. My practice is in Brimmar. My business is in Brimmar. My home is in Radnor. My business is in Radnor. So we would like to, to plead with the commissioner to listen to our concern, because it is an important issue for our neighborhood. And as you've seen, how many of us have been here tonight, taken out of the time out of our busy life, so that we could be here and let you know how we feel about this project. The nature of my work, I access my practice database regularly. My patient can call me anytime. I have never, ever had an issue with not being able to perform my work function or my social obligation because of the lack of cellphone coverage. And I think that speaks volume because of all the things that we have to do in our professional life. My husband's a geneticist. He does conference calls on a daily basis, talking to large-cap companies, and he has never had issues at all with the cellphone being dropped. And I think that is an important aspect as to why we're here. The trade-off to have the testing, all the microcell there, is not worth it to us, and we would like to make it known. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Rich Moreno. I'm representing my home at Ravenscliff, my partner Dan, and our children, Isaac and Sierra. We are also opposed to the small cell towers as well. We find it redundant to the technology we already place, to surround Wi-Fi calling. I also second the idea that we do telecommuting from home often, and I have zero issues. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else?
Evening.
Evening. My name is Kim Leonie. My husband and I have been in the neighborhood newly. However, my husband was, grew up in the neighborhood, and has been in, his parents are up the street neighbors for about 25 years. I'd like to come at this from a health perspective. The unknown health risks are very uncertain. We have a lot of children in the neighborhood, a lot of people with health conditions that might have major concerns over the health of the cell tower. So I'd like to make it known, besides the aesthetics, I think we should all be concerned with the questionable health risks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Oh, please.
I'm Jackie Blumberg, and I live at 235 Ravenscliff. And I don't know why this is being forced in our community. I don't know why we have to keep going to these hearings. It should stop. Our street does not want this. The majority of people don't want this in their neighborhood. It should just stop. It should stop today. Can you tell us it will stop today?
So...
I don't even know what's going on. Are we, are we, have we given Crown Castle that, like, what's going on with this?
They started, they showed up. What day was it?
Okay, so...
You didn't bring that up.
Here...
What day was it that they showed up?
Right? I mean, we're not...
So here, and, and we've, you know, Megan, in, in speaking...
Okay, let's call the township, let's put a stop. I mean, come on, we don't want this. It should stop today. What we're done, it's over, done.
Okay.
So, and I haven't been involved in this at all, but what I understand from talking to Commissioner Abel and Bob is that they've done some testing out in some of the neighborhoods, including your neighborhood. I think Bob has told them to stop doing testing in your neighborhood. There's nothing in front of the Commissioners. The Commissioners haven't approved anything for them to do anything. And under the Township zoning ordinance, they would need to get some kind of zoning approval, you know, with a plan that shows, here's what we want to do. They would have to get, if it's outside the right-of-way, the Township would have to approve it, or inside the right-of-way. If it's outside of the right-of-way, the property owners would have to approve it. So there's nothing that the Township has approved. I know there's been some conversation, I guess with Commissioner Abel. Bob, you can fill me in to what else has happened, but I know that they've been told by Township manager, there's no need to do any testing. But just so you all know, cell companies, they go around neighborhoods with or without permission from the municipality, they can go out and do testing. Comcast does it, they pull along the side of the road, they check signals. If they're on a public right-of-way, they can do that. But what I'm hearing is the neighbors want to make sure the Township's not encouraging that at all, nor are you asking them to do that, nor is there any agreement in front of you to do that. So I think that if this board, the five of you, could affirm that that's where you are with it, and I think they've stopped doing any testing at this point.
Yeah, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, it's loud and clear. That's why I'm, they're all speaking to us, and that's great, but usually there's a land development application that I'm being asked to deny or something like that. So I'm like, what, what's the action item I'm taking, you know?
When was the last time you saw them come out to your neighborhood?
So they came out just once, what was the date? It was probably about a week and a half ago, after we had already been informed that the testing was on pause. So some residents saw them come out, spoke with them. They spoke with the project manager, who's been in touch with Mr. Zinkowski, and they stopped.
So, Bob, did I see you had your mic on?
Sure. Maybe just a little history is back on January 28th, Crown Castle was in front of the board, in which they made a presentation in regards to these microcells and what they could be done. Commissioner Abel had brought this up as an option for residents to look at three neighborhoods in his ward, Round Hill, Ravens Cliff, and Inverary. Of those three areas were to be looked at. There was discussion to add those three OHAs to part of a study that would be done to see if it was feasible or not. There was an agreement as part of that, that the Public Safety Committee would need to look at communications for emergency services, since there is a problem with our emergency services getting radio calls in from Delcom. So that was the concern. They were to come back with a proposal to the board in two weeks, Crown Castle, which there was no proposal that came back to the board. I know in speaking with the representative from Crown Castle, he had worked with Commissioner Abel on getting information out to the HOAs. I know we had tried to communicate with Crown Castle, and I know Jennifer was sending emails, and we didn't get any response to them until we made a phone call to them. And I met with the representative and had asked that this be stopped until there's a better handle on what's actually going to take place in the three areas. And I know we heard from a lot of residents, Megan yourself, and a number of residents in the Ravens Cliff area, that they did not want to be a part of any further testing in this area. So I think what, that's where we sit here today.
Yeah, so I guess our sort of ask is, the way I sort of see what's going on right now is Crown appears to be waiting to hear from the Township. I don't know if that's the board or, or who exactly, but they're waiting for direction about what to do. So if we're all coming here and saying, and the majority of us do not want to move forward with this, is there any direction you can give them on our behalf so that we don't have to endure the testing phase? We don't have to move forward? Does anyone have the authority to do that?
Well, I mean, I think if we're going to direct, because they don't, they don't talk to us. They talk to our Township manager and our solicitor. So if we're going to give a direction, we'd have to do that by resolution or by, right?
I mean, if, the sense of the board is that you don't want the testing to go forward. I think if you all nod your heads tonight without a resolution or an ordinance, because there's really nothing to resolve or pass by ordinance. But if that's where you're at, then, you know, that's the direction Bob needs to then say, "Stop."
And then they can commence in the other two neighborhoods.
So, you know, definitely, and again, thank you all for coming out. You know, I think I've heard quite clearly that it would seem that, you know, many people in Ravens Cliff don't want this. So is it possible for them to just do the testing in the other two places? See how it works if those other two neighborhoods are interested in this? And see, I think somebody said, you know, see how it works, and if it works and if people like the way it looked, then come to Ravens Cliff later date? You know, I don't know. I don't want to, okay. I mean, I don't want to completely put the kibosh on, you know, on this project. I know that Commissioner Abel's been working hard to address a concern of, I guess, other residents, so...
Yeah, yeah. I understand there's three neighborhoods impacted here, and we're only here tonight to advocate, just for ourselves.
All right. So it's, we've got, we're two hours in now, so we've got to get this moving. So why don't we give him direction, so he knows what to do?
I mean, is there consensus that we go ahead and allow Crown Castle to go into, you know, I guess, Inverary and Round Hill?
Can you...
And they don't need to...
Yeah, it's a carve-out. It's a carve-out. Is there any way to memorialize that?
All right.
Is there consensus, Jack, or something?
Yeah, we can ask them for that. I don't think we can make them do that, but we can ask them.
Well, I mean, I think we should make them do that. It's scaring the neighbors to the point where it's the commandeering of private property, which is basically almost eminent domain, so...
We literally can't make them not test there. We can ask them.
Well, you can ask them, but I don't want a proposal to come back saying, "Hey, by the way, even though you didn't want us, you only wanted a proposal for these two HOAs, but we decided to do a proposal for this."
Well, at least if we have a proposal...
I think we need to step out of this issue and tell Crown Castle is a commercial enterprise, and if they think they have a market, they will do whatever they normally do. It's not the Township's business. We can't prevent them from going on public rights-of-way.
We can write a letter. We can ask them, please tell...
Yeah, we can tell them we're not in favor of this, and we don't support it. That would be the extent of it.
In all honesty, I mean, to, you know, Mr. Rice's point, if they did bring us a proposal and we had something to react, that, you know, to vote on or something like that, then that's when we can get involved. If they're coming through here and they want to, you know, use the right-of-way, then that would become our concern, and we would vote accordingly with regards to that. But, you know, we can certainly send a letter. Is that, John, is that what we would do? Or Bob, would you just call them?
I will make a phone call. Crown Castle has been very good to work with. When we've asked them to stop, they've stopped. I think if I go to them and say, you know, the wish of the board is not to continue in Ravens Cliff, please go forward in the other two developments, they will cooperate with that. Well, there is, they will have to do work that involves this board. But I'm just saying, we shouldn't ask them to do that. Just tell them, stay out of Ravens Cliff, period.
Yeah.
All right. So Sean, you're on board with this? All right, well, I think you have consensus.
They're happy, then I'm happy.
Okay. All right, we have consensus. You'll make that call tomorrow, Bob?
Thank you all very much for listening.
Thank you all. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. All right. Moving along, review of sanitary sewer forecast. Mr. White?
All right. Ian, if you could load up my laptop for the screens, please. All right. So the Board of Commissioners met last Monday in a special meeting to begin the conversation on the Township's sanitary sewer system from a forecasting and planning standpoint. What we discussed last Monday, and I'll just, I'll spend one minute kind of recapping and then get into addressing specifically what was asked for. The sewer rent and the fund that it's associated with is a calculation of water consumption, which is provided to the Township by Aqua, times a rate that's established by the Board of Commissioners, and that generates revenue into the fund. Those revenues should be sufficient to cover all of the costs of the program. The sanitary sewer program includes the infrastructure, the pipes in the ground, excluding the laterals that are owned by the individual homeowners, so the pipes that are running in the public right-of-way. As well, the other part of the program are flows, all of the sanitary water flows downstream to, and it's all metered, and the Township pays a rate through RHM for that flow. And then finally, we also have a three-person crew out of our Public Works Department that is charged with the daily maintenance and operation of roughly 130 miles of sewer lines, about 1,600 manholes, and four pumping stations that are pretty significant in their own right. And as we learned last Monday, a lot of the time from our three individuals, our crew is out doing PA1 calls and marking lines for other folks to get into the ground. We also determined that, as we looked at the, what's gone on over the last few years in the sanitary sewer fund, that the primary cause of our decline in fund balance is the introduction of capital expenses into the fund, which I know the numbers are probably small on the screen for those in the room. But what we discussed and looked at last Monday is, as soon as the Township had to start, or not had to, as soon as the Township decided to start investing capital or reinvesting capital into the system in 2013, we immediately began to overspend our revenues. And in the last couple of years, due to a couple significant sewer breaks and emergency repairs, that overspending has been significant enough to require the general fund to have to transfer almost $5 million of tax money into the sewer program, just to give it enough cash to keep it running. So what we discussed then on Monday was, we took a look at what the forecast looks like out over the next five years. We discussed a capital program that includes roughly $4 million a year and the impact of adding $4 million to the rate. And then we also talked about, if we were building the program today from scratch, it would probably include a little bit more of a comprehensive maintenance crew, folks that are dedicated towards the daily cleaning, folks that are dedicated towards the markouts, and the folks who are dedicated to solving the daily issues that come up in the system. And we looked at what that rate might look like, and there was obviously some reaction to that in the meeting. And for, for those that are jumping into the conversation now, this isn't new. We've spent the last two years looking at these numbers, and they've been relatively consistent. It's just a, the year in which a rate adjustment necessary to fund a more comprehensive capital program just becomes the next year out in the forecast. But what was requested of us for tonight was to go back into the forecast and take a look at what a capital replacement program might look like if the Township were to simply borrow a large sum of money upfront, invest those dollars into repairing as much of the system as we can with that money, and then only adjusting the rate to fund the debt service on that borrowing. So that's what we worked on. And part of the discussion last Monday was the fact that the rate as it exists today is not going to be sufficient to cover even, or to cover today's operating and flow costs. And we went round and round last Monday about that. So what I did is, when I, when I put this forecast together, beginning in 2020, is we stacked what the different adjustments to the rate would look like and the reasons for those increases. And I'll, well, let me just talk about the numbers real quick, and then I'll try to blow up the graph, because that might help. But what we have in the top portion of the forecast are costs. As I described earlier, we have some debt on the existing, existing debt that the fund is responsible for paying off. That includes the notes that were issued late last year for the emergency projects that we're currently working on now, and those that we had to do at the last, in the last fall, as well as the RHM costs, which are by far the most significant cost of the fund. And then finally, the operations, which includes our Public Works crew, as well as the costs associated with the various agreements we have with our surrounding municipalities on which direction certain flows are going. And in total, we're looking at 6.1 to 6.2 million, and that amount growing modestly over the forecast period. So then from there, we back into what rate would be necessary to fund that level of activity. Our baseline is the $7.14, which is the 2019 rate. And then we calculate or forecast out what water consumption might look like, and this is, as we've talked about, a pretty critical component, obviously, because it's, it is the base of what the revenue is generated from. So fluctuations in this number have a significant financial impact to what the fund realizes on an annual basis. And then we calculate down to a net revenue, and as I noted last Monday, and I'll try to reiterate again tonight a little bit more clearly, is that at a, at a base level, before we even consider adding any kind of capital plan, there's negative net revenue. So the $7.14 at the forecasted water consumption levels isn't going to be sufficient to cover those costs. What we have is a calculation, then, of simply what it would take to break even without any capital, and that's going to be the, I don't know what color you want to call that, yellowish, orangish? That'll be that part of the graph. And then we add the, what was requested is estimated costs on a bond issuance, and then what that rate level might look like with a total rate then to look at. So one other thing before I jump into those numbers is, we talk about the sensitivity to, of water consumption to the annual revenue. So right now, what we have is, we have a linear forecast based on the last 10 years of water consumption that's forecasting what the next five years might look like. It's, it's a mathematic forecast and not one based in any kind of science. We really don't have much else to go on, as, as you could see, the actual changes in water consumption from '14 to '18 have varied significantly from year to year. There's very little correlation with any kind of rainfall, very little correlation with any other kind of indicator that we get here at the Township. So the linear forecasting is the best that we have to go on. Any, I want, so the way the math works out is a 1% adjustment in consumption equates to about a dime... What we have is a calculation then of simply what it would take to break even without any capital, and that's going to be the, I don't know what color you want to call that, yellowish, orangish? That'll be that part of the graph. And then we add the, what was requested is estimated costs on a bond issuance, and then what that rate level might look like with a total rate then to look at. So, one other thing before I jump into those numbers is, we talk about the sensitivity to, of water consumption to the annual revenue. So, right now, what we have is, we have a linear forecast based on the last 10 years of water consumption that's forecasting what the next five years might look like. It's, it's a mathematic forecast and not one based in any kind of science. We really don't have much else to go on, as, as you can see, the actual changes in water consumption from 14 to 18 have varied significantly from year to year. There's very little correlation with any kind of rainfall, very little correlation with any other kind of indicator that we get here at the township. So, the linear forecasting is, is the best that we have to go on. Any, I want, so, the way the math works out is a 1% adjustment in consumption equates to about a dime in the rate. So if, if the water, if the forecast for water consumption is short by 1%, that equates to a dime in the fee, or the rate that the township is setting. And again, as you could see, the prior year's annual change in consumption has been anywhere from less than 1% to as high as 6.7% reduction from 17 into 18. So, that's, sound like a broken record on that regard, but that obviously has a very significant impact on how we're forecasting rates going into the future. So what the rates look like if we were to borrow, and I've got this set at $15 million a borrowing for a 30-year bond. I got, I came to a $15 million number based on the 2019 budget included specific projects in its capital plan for the sewer fund that went out to 2028, and the sum of all those projects was 15.7 million. So I rounded it to 15 million and assumed a 30-year life on the bonds. The pipes themselves, as we discussed last week, will last at least 30 years. If they're well-maintained, they should last longer. So as you could see, there's obviously a lower impact to the rate in the near term under that, if we were to go that route. Just by comparison, so you could see quickly what we were looking at last week, if we were to, contemplating the roughly $4 million a year in capital program, the rate jumps up to the $13.70 right out in, in year one, and then grows from there in the out years, mostly due to the, the operating growth in those years since the capitals fixed them out. So that, that answers the, the direct question from the Commissioner on, who unfortunately is not here tonight, on what it would look like if we borrowed a lump sum upfront, invested that into the line, and then only increased the rate to, to fund that debt service. Now, when, when putting this together, there's a couple of things to keep in mind. First of all, we are engaged with Gannett Fleming right now on a study of the entire system that will help begin the conversation of what the numbers might look like, again, at a, at a 30,000-foot level to, to replace the entire system. So, understanding that that is, we don't have those numbers yet, and that'll be helpful when we get those to, to add to the, the analysis. The other part is, is it's safe to say that 15 million is not going to fix the system for the long term. It's going to take significantly more than that. We're carrying roughly 70 million in assets on, as it is now. So, what I did is took a little bit longer-term look at the forecast, and I don't expect anyone to read that.
Sorry, can I just stop you?
Yeah.
Just one quick question. Can you go back to the prior slide? So, based on the fact that if we do take out a lump sum of 15 million, are you factoring the interest that we're taking 15 million out tomorrow, and every year we're paying debt on that 15 million?
Yeah.
Because, okay, but we're not spending 15 million tomorrow. Obviously, these projects take time, so if you can go back to that slide, that slide, you know, we're using a $3 million pipe here and 2 million there, so I don't necessarily, I mean, I, I don't, I don't see that as accurate. I'm not trying to, you know, you know, say your numbers aren't right, but, you know, is it a line of credit or something?
Bear with me. I'm getting to the next, the next step in this that might get into a little bit deep, more detail about what you're saying.
Okay, but, but, I mean, I'm just looking at those numbers. I don't, I mean, would those numbers be accurate? Because you're not gonna, you know, it's not, here's 15 million, fix it by the end of the year. This is a longer-term, how long would, you know, you're saying that we're going to borrow 15 million, over how many years would, would that work take place? I don't know if you would know, Steve, or not.
Well, I've, I've got that built into here. I'm, I'm getting to it. Well, I'll jump to that now before I, so the debt analysis, again, going back to the underlying assumption that one, a one-time $15 million borrow is not going to be enough to fix the system significantly for the long term. What I did is I went out and I built, or I forecasted out through three, three different $15 million borrowings that go from 2020, 2020 all the way out to 2050, 2060. So it's important to understand that each time we borrow the money, we're going to be paying for that 15 million. We're going to be paying that back over a 30-year period. During that period, there's interest and principal. What the township would most likely do, at least what we would advocate for, is a level debt service type of borrowing where the annual payment for all 30 years is consistent. The alternative would be to wrap the debt around and maybe have more of the principal due on the, on the back end of the borrow. But there's a lot of reasons why that would not be a good idea. The biggest one of all is trying to control the rates over the long term. So what happened, so the other part of this is, to the Commissioner's point, we borrow $15 million in 2020. We have that to spend. I assumed a five-year spend, a spend-down of that money. So it would take us at $3 million a year worth of projects to spend that 15 million down before we'd be back in the market again in 2026 for another $15 million borrow. The same model is set up for that 30-year. We'd, we'd spend five years in, investing in the system, replacing sewer lines, updating the system, until those funds were exhausted, and then we would have to do it again. Because that, when you're, when you're contemplating a borrow-only type of capital program, that would be the only way we would generate capital to invest into the sewers.
Bill, sorry, can you go back, just push it back to an earlier year? All right. So the, the interest payment and the principal, I mean, the payment is 1 point, say 1.1 million a year? So, I mean, I have my calculator here. So it's really, and you're saying it's over five years, so 1.1 million, just to round that out, times 0.2, because you're only using 20% of it, is 220,000 in payback for year one. So, yeah.
No.
Right?
So, we get all 15 million dollars upfront. We have to start paying down on the 15 million dollars at closing.
But if, but if you're only, if you're only using 3 million of that, your debt, your, your debt payment, your, your principal and your capital payment back should only be around 220,000. Am I correct? I mean, because you're, you're.
Municipal bonds, if we issued 30-year fixed-rate municipal bonds, we would receive all 15 million dollars at closing.
Okay.
At which time, we have to start paying back the 15 million dollars, not the spend-down. It, it would be in our interest to invest and spend that money as quickly as possible.
Sure.
But it's not going to affect the amortization or the paydown of the loan.
Sure, but what, but why are we sitting on 12 million dollars? You're saying that we're going to use 3 million in '21, 3 million in '22, 3 million in '23, et cetera. So why are we paying interest? Why are we paying 220,000 dollars a year on interest and principal payments if we're not using, if we're not going to be using the other 12 million? You understand what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying. The, the alternative here would be some sort of drawdown loan.
Then get them to a line of credit. Fine, yeah. Then, then why don't, but I mean, it doesn't.
In years one through five, that'll have a marginal adjustment or decrease in the amount of the payback, but over the course of 30 years, it's still going to be roughly a million one.
But, no.
Per year.
But when you look at the time value of money, you're dealing with a million one year one, and then that could be whittled down to 220,000. That's it, that's almost a million dollars of, of money that you won't be paying.
If there is a, a debt, if there is a debt instrument out there where we can borrow 15 million dollars and only pay 200,000 per year for 30 years to pay that back, let's, let's go get it.
So then, we need to either look at a, a line of credit, or you need to look at, you know, at only issuing, at only issuing three or four million at a time, and not taking 15 million. You're paying interest.
Well, we could certainly, yeah.
You're going to be paying a ton of debt service, and this money is, I mean, what's it going to earn in the bank? Unless you could get, and we, obviously, we don't pay taxes on the interest that we get in the bank, but it.
Yeah, what it earns in the bank would have to be less than what we're paying.
Yeah, I, I'm just not comfortable with, with how this is laid out. I'm not trying to say anything bad, I just don't.
Madam President, if I may, just, just to speak here to the point is, this is why no government entity should ever own a public utility and operate it, because what we're doing here is you're trying to shoemake, and I've never heard of the plan you're talking about. I've never, been in government for 28 years. The issue is, is we're trying to shoemake something in, trying to fit or squeeze something in, but not solve the problem. You have a bad sanitary sewer system that is going to need millions and millions and millions of dollar every year, and the township has not done a good job of addressing its sanitary sewer system. I trust this man with, with what he has done with bonds, he has worked, he's got years and years of experience of doing this, and to say he's wrong, or to say, well, you know, you should look at it this way or that way. We can go on forever, and that, the issue is, this is why we don't solve problems. We spend money on studies.
No, this is how we do solve problems.
No, it's not, because, you know what? We have been talking about this for years. We've been talking about this for the last two years, and nothing has happened.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, Mr. Zinkowski, please.
I think the issue is, I'm, I'm not doing a good enough job explaining the municipal bond market. The township certainly could go out on an annual basis and borrow 3 million dollars, or in, in 3 million dollar blocks. But understand that the cost of issuance, each time you go to the market on 3 million, we're going to spend hundreds of thousands of that, those dollars per year just in the issuance costs. So, it's more economic, if you have 15 million dollars worth of projects, it's more economic to borrow that in a lump sum upfront fixture and, and get a fixed interest rate over that period of time, and instead of doing the annual.
Again, I understand that the smaller the trench, if that's the right word, the more expensive it's going to be, but you're dealing in year one, 220,000 versus 1.1 million. And when you look at the time value of money, I mean, that's, that's where, that's where all your, 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 your cost savings are. When you amortize this out over 30 years, on a, or if you could even do a 40-year bond, on a system which hopefully can last 100 years, I think, I personally think that's where their value is. And there is a, a definite intangible that, you know, of owning your own system and not being at the mercy of a public utility and a, and a for-profit company. In regards to what Bob Zinkowski said, I agree. It's, this is not, you know, this is not a, a, a pretty, it's not pretty, and the, the system is in need of repair. The question is, is it's going to take 30, 40, 50 million regardless who does it, regardless? And we will see those rates, if there's a five-year moratorium, fine, then we'll, then we'll start seeing them la, you know, you know, later than sooner, but we lose that control. And I think that's what the residents and the taxpayers need, need to figure out. So, I, I'm not trying to say I don't like your numbers, I'm just saying, I, I just, I, I don't see them from, you know, my, my standpoint of, of, it, it's not, it's not selling me on, on the system, on selling the system.
I absolutely respect that, and if you'll indulge me, the, the experience of having issued municipal bonds for 20 years, typically, this is the most economic way that utilities and governments issue their, their debt when it comes to raising money for capital. So that's, that's why this was built in this manner. Ultimately, if we're borrowing 45 million, so I did three different, three different large borrowings, and I spread them out over the five years, because we wouldn't borrow the next group until we had exhausted the funds from the previous borrow. The, the problem with this approach as it is, is your, the township or the sewer fund's debt will just continue to grow and grow and grow and grow, and, and will never, at 30-year repayment, 30-year repayment, will never pay off enough principal to get ahead of this and start paying debt down. So, what ultimately, what we, what we need to decide, or what we need to get comfortable with is how quickly we want to invest money into the system, which is going to cause an increase in outstanding debt over whatever period of time that is. And then after that is, through township policies, limit the amount of debt exposure we subject the, the system to going forward.
Can I just, sorry, just one more interruption, and that'll be it for me. So you're saying that we can't? Picky, picky square.
All right, appreciate it.
So you're saying that we can never get ahead of this debt?
I'm saying if we continue to borrow in 15 million dollar blocks, yes.
So this, this system is unprofitable, is what you're saying? I mean, there's, there's no value on it. Then why is there, I mean, but there is value, it's, you know, I don't know what the rumored numbers are, I'm not going to go say what those rumored numbers are if we sell it, but there is value in the system. There, there is value, and it is an asset.
If you raise the rates.
Yeah, well, the rates are going to get raised regardless, Jack.
Oh, I'm, I'm a proponent for paying what it's going to cost in order to make my sewer flush. I will pay almost any dollar figure in order to make that happen. It is very important to me.
Good. So, the, the exercise for tonight was to compare a program where we are using primarily debt to fund the capital versus what we discussed last Monday, which was more of a immediate rate adjustment with then an annual cash payment for the projects. And when you compare the rates over, again, I'm going just out to 2035, because that captures all three of those large borrowings. You could see that in the end, the, the two rates are on top of one another. It, it works itself out to be about the same. There is the softening in the near term of what that rate might have to look like versus the cash. And, and maybe the right answer is, is probably something where if we have an immediate need, the debt might be the way to go on the near term to address, and then the township looks at more of a hybrid in those, when it makes sense, or when we get our arms wrapped around the initial investment that's going to be necessary if we elect to, to keep the system. But to, to answer the question that was asked for us to forecast out for tonight, this is really what it looks like. And, and both of these scenarios, whether we're issuing the debt, which is what the dark blue bars represent, or if we're electing to just use cash, it's assuming the same type of, or the same level of water consumption every year. So if there is, or when there is fluctuations in the, the consumption of these, the two bars would move in the same direction by the same amount.
So, let me float a two-part question. First, one for Bill, and then the other for the board. We obviously lack the political will to charge what it actually costs to run the sewer system. And, and that makes sense. It's going to cost a lot more money in order to do that. And future boards are going to have the exact same problem that we have, because nobody wants to tell the residents that your cost to run your sinks and toilets and everything else is going to go up so radically. Bill, if we were to borrow whatever amounts we needed to, both from the general fund and from banks or from bonds, if necessary, for a period of, say, four years for a phase in, and we were to, this year, pass an ordinance that would require, once we got past that phase in, instead of we arbitrarily pick a dollar figure, which is far less than necessary for the sewer rents, it's based on political calculus, it's based on what we think the residents want to hear. Instead, the ordinance provides, every year, the rate is set automatically by the previous year's rate. So we would borrow in year one, year two's rate would. So we would borrow in year one, year two's rate would be set such that it would, as best as we can predict, pay back the borrowing for year one. We borrow for year two to pay our immediate cost. Year three's rate is then set to pay back year two, and we borrow for year three's immediate cost, et cetera, in that, in that fashion. It takes some of the political calculus off of us, the political pressure off of us, gives us a phase in, and we could maybe do something where there was time to ramp up. Would that at least fix the problem?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure that I totally understand what you're laying out.
So in year one, the system costs $100,000 to operate, to use round numbers. In year two, the rule would be, you have to set a sewer rate such that it generates $100,000 to pay off what we did in year one. I understand it's never gonna be 100% accurate, because people's water usage is not going to be consistent from year to year, but we, as best as we can, we try and set sewer rates that approximate the previous year. And each year, we fund the present year's operations with debt, and pay it back the next year, because the next year sewer rent will be calculated to roughly be equal to the amount that we spent in the previous year.
Yeah, I, my initial reaction is, is, is not good.
Well, then I have a one-part question, never mind.
No, I, I'm, I'm failing to see how, it would, I would think in order for that to, to work, and maybe I'm misunderstanding what you mean by debt, but we would have to have a significant amount of cash reserves in the fund to compensate for any fluct, immediate fluctuations, 'cause this is all cash, this is a, this is a cash business. So we'd have to have enough cash on hand to compensate for fluctuations, not just in, due to the, the water consumption, but also the, the breaks, the, the, you know, what we might wake up tomorrow to without knowing today. We'd have to have enough in the fund to, to compensate for that on a cash basis. And the, the other, the other aspect that I want to touch on, I think's important, is in every regard possible, we should separate this activity from the general fund. Not just because this is its own standalone program, but the user base and those who are paying for it are different. So when we talk about taxpayers, taxpayers are paying for the general fund. Those who are not taxpayers, those who are exempt, are exempt from paying into the general fund through real estate taxes. There are no exemptions to the sanitary sewer system. You're paying based on what your consumption is. So, the, the paying base, the customer base is different for this group than it is for the general fund, and, and we should maintain that integrity as, as best as possible, so that the users of the system are the ones paying for it. So having said that, I, I'm not sure how we set a syst, I mean, maybe another way to get at the same approach is that on an annual basis, there's a, the board has a ordinance on the books that dictates what the calculation for the rate is. And maybe that needs to be more forward-looking than backwards-looking, in, which will bring on its own set of issues to overcome, but at least in that case, there's time to adjust for fluctuations and things that are unpredictable, including shifting in what we have to do on a capital front. 'Cause that, that, that's kinda why we're in this, not kind of, that is why we're in this situation, is the investments on the capital side have been insignificant for such a long period of time, that the system's fallen in disrepair, and we, as a township, have struggled for as long as I've been here in approving capital projects and getting them installed, and that's, that's really the, the one piece that if we could overcome on the capital side, I think the funding aspect will solve itself.
Is this part two?
Or become more obvious, maybe.
Well, I guess it's part two, in the sense that I had a different question for the board, but now I'm just going to say, either we need to get to a place where the, the cost of the system for the individual user is set mechanically, so that the political process is not involved, and we're not making that decision, or we need to sell the system.
Bill, so, the issue here is what it costs, is, is what it costs to fix a sewer system. So, I guess my, my question is, how would it, how would this modeling be any different for a for-profit entity, say Aqua? All I see is the rate's gonna go up, period, right? We, we can agree on that, but Aqua's gonna model something very similar, they know that they're gonna have to go in and fix the sewer, so it's not, not any different. There's no free lunch, the sewer, it's gonna go up, and if this is what it costs just for the township to break even using similar contractors and using similar engineers, et cetera, I can only imagine what Aqua will charge, because they're not gonna try to break even on this. They're gonna have to show a profit year after year after year, and their profit of 2% or 3% will compound year after year after year. So five, or say 10 years of a 2% profit isn't a 20% increase in, it, it isn't a 20% increase in, 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 in rates, it would be, it would be higher, 25, 27, because it's compounded. So I guess my question is, for you, is how is this, how is our model any different than Aqua? Because it's gotta go in and get, and get fixed. Rates are gonna go up, who's gonna pay for it? We are, it's just how we pay for it.
Yeah, the, the simple answer is, is I have no idea how Aqua will model, what Aqua models. I can't, I can't speak to their business plan, or, or what they, you know, how, you know, what their return on investment is, what kind of implementation of sewer line replacements, or rates, I, there's no way any of us could speak to that. What we do know is that they provide our drinking water, so whatever model they would have on the sanitary sewer side would be similar to that, we're already paying on the water side, and that they would be subject to the, the Public Utility Commission, which has its own controls and mechanisms in place to prevent the, the rate gouging that, that I think everyone has an initial reaction to. But, I don't know. What we do know is, is that we own the system today, it's in disrepair, it's gonna take significant amount of money over a long period of time to bring it back into good operate, or good operating levels, and we need to figure out how we're gonna do it. If we're gonna continue to own it, we have to figure out how to do that.
Sure, but, but it's gonna take Aqua a tremendous amount of money to, to fix it as well, and they're gonna have to get that money back, because it's an investment.
I mean, I think, if, if we really wanna know what Aqua's gonna do, we should ask Aqua.
Could we move on about this debate, 'cause we're sliding now into the whole, sell the system or not, and that's not what we're trying to do tonight. Bill and Bob, in your experience, are there alternative ways to charge rather than using water consumption?
For sanitary sewer?
Yeah. I mean, it, sanitary, using water is a, not really a true measure, because as we know, we pay RHM and downstream based on flow that we're sending them, and that can come from I&amp;I and a whole bunch of other sources. And, oh, by the way, that's another thing, you're working really hard here with a scalpel, when in fact, what you really need is a meat axe, because we have virtually no control over the biggest expense, which is the downstream.
Granted, that is...
So, you know, we can do the best job in the world, and RHM, or Springfield, or Delcora can decide they all need green light bulbs instead of red, and our prices go up.
That is part of being the smallest fish in this pond.
But I, really be interesting, is, is there a better surrogate for the sewer than water use?
Short of metering the flows ourselves at each source, I, I'm not sure there's, there's a, a cost-effective alternative.
Or is there perhaps even a hybrid? I think about, when I first moved to Radnor, I had public sewers, but I had a well. And I paid on a formula based on the number of facilities I had in my home. Or I had the option of installing a water meter on, you know, on the well.
There are some models that communities have that bill on the frontage, what your frontage is to, to the street, and that's how it's calculated. So you would have bigger users, again, based on frontage, would pay more, because that line that's in front of, most of the times, are in front of their businesses, they're paying for that maintenance of that pipe that directly impacts them right in front. Ours would be unique in a way, because I know some of ours run through, go backyards, but frontage has been a way in which some communities have addressed that, and it's based on, again, the usage directing that, their property to the main line.
And another thing that we haven't covered, 'cause it really doesn't affect it that much, is as we improve the system, we'll actually see our gross flows reduce because of the repairing I&amp;I and those kind of things.
And that's, that could be significant, but there's no way to, as you noted, there's not, there's, there's no way for us to sit here today and be able to predict how much I&amp;I we're getting charged downstream. But that, fixing the lines would help reduce the amount we pay to RHM, just as a matter of fact.
Luke, do you have anything you wanna add?
I mean, I'd be interested to hear directly from Aqua, as to what their plans would be. I mean, all I'm hearing is the rate's gonna go up, and there could be a large infusion of money. I don't know, logically speaking, I think that makes sense, and we share the liability. I'd like to hear from them, to be completely honest, what their plans would be. Just their plans, I know people will be here, and people will be freaking out, they'll be losing their minds, but all I wanna, I wanna hear their plans, no vote or anything.
I think what you're saying, Luke, is, wouldn't it be nice to make the decision based on fact?
That would be nice, yeah.
Yeah.
So, okay, I don't think that's a, a bad idea, you know, I don't think we are, we're not, certainly not gonna solve this tonight. And, you know, I agree with Commissioner Larkin, and the idea that, you know, moving forward, we need to figure out the best way to kinda take the political aspect out of it, 'cause you're right, it is, you know, it's a difficult thing to raise people's, you know, rates and ask them to pay more. So, if we were gonna move forward, I guess, and, and continue to get all the information that we need, which I think I said at our meeting last week, that's what, and that's what this exercise was about, and, you know, Bill, thank you very much, I know you put up a lot of time and effort into this, and it certainly shows, and, and thank you for that. You know, is there consensus of the board that, you know, to hear, I mean, I don't even know, does Aqua wanna come in and talk to us? Would they want to do that? Is that something, and find out what that looks like? And, and the other thing I would be interested in, is if we're going to do that, and, you know, explore that possibility, I'd like to hear from a community that perhaps has done that as well.
What I can, what I can say is, I doubt Aqua's gonna come in and lay their hand because if the board decides that you would wanna negotiate, or actually publicly bid it, you would have them lay their hand out, which, which would be a problem. I think what Commissioner Nagel had spoke about is, we don't know what the facts are on this, and I think that's, we had talked about doing a study, so that you can actually deal with facts and present it to the community and say, here they, here it is, based on facts, this is what your system looks like. You can't say that they're gonna raise rates outrageously, 'cause nobody knows what they're going to do. And the other part is, what is fact, which is actually fact, this board can raise rates much higher than what the Public Utilities Commission would allow. So, that is, is completely different, so, you know, we, we just, these entities don't do a good job at managing a public utility, and it's going to get more and more and more expensive, as Commissioner Larkin had said. You can see where the situation we're in today, because it's a political utility, no one's going to raise rates where, where they need to go. It's just, it's not gonna happen, and we just continue to keep falling, fall further behind, but I do appreciate this board actually tackling this, hitting it head-on, because it's not gonna get any better. So, but I appreciate the board looking at this.
Bob, what's it cost to have a survey to find out? How much would it cost to replace? I know we looked at that in the past.
We had proposals, at the next meeting, we could bring that back to you, to discuss.
Sorry, and then my follow-up is, that, that would be a separate company from the one that would be trying to maybe sell it or shop it, I don't know.
That's correct.
Okay, so it's a third party, they're separate, and that's something that we should investigate.
Okay, so, at the next meeting, you'll bring forth, so on the June 10th meeting, bring forth something, or, I mean, we already had a, we already had a, a plan that was not approved, so, but I guess, you know, we can certainly take another look at that, and see what the, what the feeling of the board is. You know, this is definitely an issue, you know, I guess it would be easy for us as a board to say, well, let's continue to kick the can down the road. You know, I think it's our responsibility to not do that, and it's our responsibility to the residents to make sure we're making, you know, good decisions for now and for the future. So, it's definitely not something that's gonna be solved overnight, and again, I think, I think Bill said at our last meeting, or Steve said, oh, you know, it took us 100 years to get here, you know, let's hope it doesn't take us 100 years to figure it out, but...
You're exactly right, Commissioner, it, it would take, if the township looked at this study, you would look at well over a year, possibly two years before, there'd be any position, but you'd involve the, the entire community, say that they knew exactly where it was at, and it should be obvious to all of us, at the end of the day, where we're at. So thank you for...
So, with that study, so that's what you think the study, okay. And then perhaps, you know, if, if this is something that's gonna end up in selling a public utility, or selling our utility, you know, we should then also plan for, you know, consistent meetings, community engagement, you know, if we're going through this plan, does, you know, will it have, you know, will there be certain milestones that we can report out on, so that the community can be involved every step of the way? I mean, I put this in my newsletter, that we discussed this at our last meeting, and I had some residents email me, and they were still confused about the difference between the sewer rate and the stormwater fee, thinking that it's the same thing. And maybe that's because now the bills are together, but, you know, and not understanding that we did have this, you know, sewer concern. So, I think the more information we can put out there, the more that people can be involved in the process, that'd be helpful. All right, have we exhausted this? Okay, are we good, Bill? Are we good? Okay. Bill, thank you again for all your good work. Okay, moving along, now we have the Fenimore Woods Park Improvement Plan presentation. Ms. Cohen, or no?
Thank you, I'll take the lead, I'll take the lead from here. So, thank you for the opportunity tonight to present what is a much-needed plan, improvement plan for Fenimore Woods. Tonight, Gilmore and Associates is here with us, they're a design and engineering firm. Thanks so much, guys, for hanging in for the last few hours. We'll try to get through this quickly, but wanna give a lot of attention to a park that definitely needs it, bless you. Throughout the last year, we've been looking at the, going through the process and looking at the plan, and putting it together. These guys have been working since they were authorized by the board last July, I believe, to go through this process, and we've been working very closely. As I had mentioned, it's a long-awaited plan, it's, it's exciting. Fenimore Woods is a great space, it offers so much opportunity to the community, and it's a chance now to finally address a lot of the aging infrastructure that's at the site. There are erosion issues at the site, there's ingress egress issues, safety, accessibility, and they're gonna step through all of those details. The park offers really, it's a dynamic park with a lot of opportunities, it has a blend of... It has a blend of active spaces, social spaces. It's all within a wooded area, very unique, not unlike the Willows, very popular park used by residents. Could arguably want to be one of the most heavily utilized parks of the non-sports field category. There's a lot of reservations that take place over the course of a year. All the weekends really from April to October are in use at the site with reservations. There's a lot of annual events that take place there by our residents, by our school groups, by a lot of our local organizations that are routine. Lots of camps have taken place at the site over the years. And of course, the neighbor usage, the neighborhood usage is incredible with regards to the playground, the pond. All of the residents really across the township use this park in many ways, all four seasons out of the year. So, unfortunately, the conditions of the park in the last 10 years, we've heard a lot of, a lot of negative about the conditions, lack of a bathroom, lack of good conditions throughout the park. Had a huge increase in terms of the decline in usage, something that we certainly have had to address as a department. Lots of feedback that we receive on an ongoing basis. We've had the opportunity in recent Parks and Recreation Board meetings to have discussions and have a public forum. We had neighbors out, we invited the neighbors to come and speak. We heard a lot of really great information, we heard a lot of positivity, we heard a lot of excitement and energy about what this park can really become with the improvements. So, and ultimately, there was a motion by the Parks and Recreation Board to move it on to the Board of Commissioners. So lots of productivity that was generated out of those meetings. So tonight's goal, before I turn it over, just to let you know kind of what we're looking for. We want to, we want to review and discuss the plan. It's a version two of the plan, went through two iterations through Parks Board, and ultimately, get your consideration for authorization to go to bid for the project. So with that, I'm going to turn the floor over to Gilmore and Associates. Kevin and TJ are here, and they're going to step you through the plan in more detail.
Thanks, Tammy. So, we're here to talk about the Fenimore Woods project. As Tammy said, we're here to get a motion to go to bid from you guys, so. I'm PJ McIntyre, Registered Landscape Architect, and this is Kevin Selger, our Director of Landscape Architecture, and as well as a Registered Landscape Architect. So, the, as Tammy alluded to a little earlier, we've taken several steps to get to this point, so if we could just kind of backtrack a little bit. So, in July of 2018, we were given the approval to go for a design and engineering for this project. From there, we went through this with Radnor Township Administration to kind of work with some residents a little bit and develop the draft plan. As Tammy alluded to, there were various times where we've met with residents. From there, we've gone through two park board presentations this February, as well as this March, when we were recommended to move to you. So, right now, we are, sorry. We are here for the review and the consideration of the park, as well as a motion to go to bid. So, we're going to do a quick review of the actual site and project itself. So, the Fenimore Woods project is located on Eagle Road and Paul Road. To the east, we have Eastern University, and to the north, Cabrini University. And then completely surrounding it is residential zones. The red outline being the actual boundary of the project and limitation. So if we look at closer at an inventory of it, it's approximately an 11 and a half acre park project that contains a 2.2 acre pond. The Gulf, the Gulf Creek actually runs directly through it, contains both 100 and 500-year floodplains, as well as a designed floodway. And as I said before, it neighbors two universities, as well as three residential neighborhoods. So, this is the existing conditions plan as it sits right now for Fenimore Woods. There are certain program elements that we'll get into in a little bit as to what's there now. These dark trees are ones that are, have been differentiated by the township compared to the green trees that you see on that plan that are assessed as. Right, by the township's arborist.
Those have been identified as ones to come down?
Correct.
Okay.
So the existing programming at Fenimore Woods right now consists of a playground, a pavilion with both picnic tables and grills, parking, walking trails around the pond, as well as portable bathrooms. And as you can see from some of the site photos, this actually was, we went out during one of the heavy rains we had, and most of it was pretty, pretty well-soaked, to the point where the ground actually couldn't take anything anymore. It was starting to flood, as well as the pavilion that is in, it could be in better shape. So the site constraints that we've kind of identified here are, they are a little lengthy, but these are the ones that we consider the most important. And the most important is the aging infrastructure. The actual infrastructure of the park seems to be a little bit dated and is not, not aged all that well. Flooding and stormwater management, as I alluded to in the previous picture, that does not drain very well. Adequate parking and site access. ADA accessibility, currently, there is no ADA guidelines or standards set within the park, design standards. Maintaining the Fenimore feel has been illustrated with other things within Radnor Township. It is set in the woods, it is important to maintain that. As well as the sensitivity to the neighbors, both the residential areas, as well as the universities. So the proposed programming that we've identified for the project with both Tammy, as well as residents, and previous iterations of this project were to add two reconfigured parking lots, new ADA access and parking as part of those parking lots, a replacement of the existing pavilion with seating and an adjacent bathroom, new stone walking trails around the pond, a new stone walking trail loop around the upper area of the park, a dry stream for the new, with a new bridge, which we'll get to in a little bit, a replacement of the existing bridge that accesses the current pond to improve and relocate the existing playground. I believe it was done in the early 2000s. Park landscaping and native tree plan, as well as a reforestation plan, erosion control, and then, of course, the demolition of the stable you saw earlier. So these are some of the examples that we've pulled for the proposed programming of this park. These are all prefabricated pavilion structures that seem to have that kind of woodsy feel that seems to be more important to Fenimore Woods. We've actually worked with Romtech, which is a pavilion and small prefab building manufacturer, and they've developed this pavilion and bathroom combination for us, working with this project. A new playground, this is not the actual space, but the general layout of a new playground for the space. Granted, it's all subject to change, which moves us into the actual master plan for the park. So we can start with the northern parking lot. The parking lot is proposed to be all stone, utilizing the existing entrance that's there now, and adding a second one. A drop-off area for those who aren't able-bodied, as well as two new ADA spots and an area for a new dumpster enclosure, which is right here. This is all attached to a walking, stone walking trail, as well as a central axis that cuts through it and connects to the other parking lot. The other parking lot does come off of Paul Road for its main entrance. It's stone as well. It does feature ADA parking, as well as an accessible route down to the pond itself, with a replacement bridge for the existing one. And then within our trail, off the central axis, would be the new playground, the new pavilion and bathroom area, as well as the dry stream that cuts through it to manage some of our stormwater, as well as a trail and new bridge. So, when we start to lay this out, we obviously have to look at stormwater, not only because we have to, but clearly because of the issues on the site. So, any of the, the existing red, well, the red dash line here is an existing pipe that comes from Cabrini College. It's the main drainage right now for Fenimore Woods. It empties out right here through a culvert. And we are proposing, this is very, this is schematic at this point, obviously, but any of the blue dashed lines are a conveyance of stormwater. So, the upper portion is a vegetated swale to take this water down into a new inlet and connect into the existing pipe. The dry stream is a form of conveyance with an inlet at the end of it, again, to connect into the existing infrastructure, as well as another swale that will be, that will end up in the same pipe. We've looked at underwater storage, or underwater, underground storage for some of the stormwater infrastructure, as well as rain gardens here, here, and here. So, we've talked about this before a little bit, but.
We got a lot of questions about what a dry stream is.
We did, we did get quite a few questions about what a dry stream is. And a dry stream is pretty much exactly what it sounds like. It's a dry stream bed that during really, really heavy rain events will carry water away to an inlet and then eventually dry up again. It will never be fully inundated as a, you know, a stream or river. There'll never be ponding water or anything like that. It's all taken downhill, just as a normal stream would be, only this time it ends in an inlet that takes it elsewhere.
We're trying to convey a lot of water that's uphill through the park.
Correct.
And right now, it's just tearing through the park, but to create a feature.
Right.
And use that stormwater as part of the feature of the park.
Right, so while it conveys the stormwater, it also kind of gives a little bit of an educational and more nature experience to the park itself without sticking it in a pipe underground. This is an enlargement of the main programmatic elements of the park. So again, this is the dry street. This is the dry stream that cuts through down to an inlet. The combined playground that connects up with steps to the pavilion, that these areas are, this, these two areas are not solely dependent on each other, but can solely, you know, but can interact together and be used as one. This is the entrance off of Shimonie Road. So we had discussed before possibly having vehicular access to this area, but without wanting to put such structures as a bollard or a fence or things like that. So what we decided to do was take boulders and strategically place them so that they more or less can't be accessed. There can't get a throughway for a car.
Township access.
Correct.
Police Department, Public Works, Parks Department.
And that is just a review of the plan again. Our next steps, which we've outlined in the beginning of this, as to what we're looking for, which is the motion to go to bid for the project.
Okay, is that it?
Yeah, that is it.
All right. Well, it seems beautiful. Tammy, do you have anything you want to add, or?
I don't. I just really want to take an opportunity to thank Gilmore Associates for a lot of the creativity that they put behind this and a lot of the natural features blended in, not only for functionality, but tying in with the ambiance and the natural beauty of Fenimore Woods. I think these guys did a really great job. And as I mentioned before, the park is in much need of improvement. So, it's exciting to be able to start to address a lot of the things that are going on there that have been problematic.
Yes, Tammy is right, it's beautiful. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Looks great.
How old is that stable? Do you know offhand?
It was with the original estate at the park. It dates back to, I believe, the late 1800s, early 1900s.
Is there anything that can be done to, I mean, I know that you can't make it a building, but to somehow save and preserve that wall? It is definitely a piece of history. As soon as you knock that down, you, you don't get that back. I don't know, you know, just having a wall, obviously with no roof. But is there some, is there some way, and I know it would be an added cost, to protect that historical piece?
Commissioner Farhi, what wall are you referencing? A portion of the stable or a particular wall?
Yeah, a portion of the stable. I mean, is there anything that could be done to at least save or protect some of that, you know, the integrity of the history of, of Fenimore, or no?
Well, the goal's to remove the entire stable because it, right now, where the parking lot is, has been redesigned, would be right within that space, which is needed.
It's just, you know, when you take a piece of history that's 150 years old and you just, you know, and put a demolition crew on it, it's just, it's a piece of history you'll never get back. So, I didn't know if there was anything that could be done to that, to save the, you know, it's, obviously, it's a wall and that, but you'll look at it and say, great, what's it here for? But it is a. Yeah, yeah, but it's definitely a piece of history. There's two other issues, so if there is anything that last minute could be done, I think that it's definitely something important to take a look at. There are just two other additional items. One is, and I've taken my son there, we've fished in the pond. So tell me about how you're going to protect and preserve the wildlife in that pond as construction is going through? And because it is, you know, there's turtles and there's fish, but mainly there's turtles and there's wildlife and geese and other animals. You know, I mean, I've saw cedar waxwing, which I've never seen before, but I happened to see it at Fenimore when I was with my son. How you can preserve some of that wildlife as you're doing construction? And then the other issue that I had, when I was fishing, is the mosquitoes, they're absolutely terrible. I don't know if you've been there or not, but they are just terrible. And that is a health issue with the different diseases that they carry. You know, what, you know, process or how would you go to, to help alleviate some of that health risk?
So, as far as construction, be clear, around the pond, we're not actually doing any work in the pond. That's something that was, we were looking at as kind of taking off the table, future project. The only work that's going to go on around the pond. Yeah, but go, point out the path. So, no, around the pond, around the pond. So we're basically putting a stone walking path essentially in the, in the berm that's there now. We've already had conversations with DEP and the Army Corps relative to permitting that area because it's all covered in the floodplain. We would have to, for the bridge, go to both of those entities for approvals. I mean, in this case, we're going to be looking at standard erosion control, you know, compost socks. Obviously, we cannot disturb into the pond or have any of that disturbance go, soil or erosion go into the pond, or the Gulf Creek. So, we're likely going to have that type of scenario along both edges of that pathway. As far as disturbance species, we've, we've already polled, there's no threatened or endangered species.
And then the mosquito issue?
I'm not sure I would answer that.
I think, I think that's something we can refer to our health department to look into. That's the first I've heard of mosquitoes.
Okay, no, they're, they're bad.
Mosquito issue there, so I think that's something we can look at internally.
Thanks.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, I think it's absolutely beautiful. And I've, Tammy, I know you, you've had this in front of Parks and Rec a couple of times. And I'm sure that they've made changes as we've gone along.
Main adjustments, please, on comments we got, both from public and from the board themselves.
You know, I know that the building that's on that property, it is completely dilapidated, so I have no, if the recommendation is that it come down, I am comfortable with that. I know our township does work to preserve where it's possible, so I'm going to guess that it's not possible or useful. I like the way the park. I like the way the parking lot has been reconfigured, so it's not going, you know, into the park as much as the current one is. So, you know, more in parallel to the road, so I like that. I don't know, I'm inclined to, is, you know, given that everyone seems to like the plan, you know, I'm inclined to make a motion to authorize a receipt of bids for the park improvement, parks improvement. I need someone else to make the motion. I don't think I can do that.
I will make the motion that Lisa just said.
All right. Is there any additional discussion or motion on the floor to accept authorized receipt of bids for Fenimore Woods Park improvements? Is there any staff comment? Any public comment to the motion on the floor? Certainly. Come on up, Jane.
Jane Gally, Barclayton Road in Rosemont. The dry creeks, how fast do they empty out? Let's say we had an event like we did last August, which was just a disaster all over the place. What's that going, what's going to happen there?
It's going to be no different than a pipe.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Like danger to children, danger to...
No, there's, there's no rapid water or anything like that.
Coming off of up above. You said it's coming from up above.
Right, it's no different than a pipe. It's just the water's exposed.
That's the part I'm worried about. I mean, we had a swimming pool out here when it happened. I mean, that creek was up, what, four feet, five feet?
No, it never, it would never be that high. It's not even that deep.
Okay. I just was worried for, you know, children that would think it was very exciting to get into and we had, no, we've had problems, so. I don't want a child going under a culvert and saying, see ya, you know?
We were actually, we've been out there in several rain events, like heavy rain events, Gulf Creek up and almost over the bridge.
Okay.
So, we've, we've, we've been out there during rain events. We have a very good idea of...
What's going to happen?
What's going on, what's happening?
I mean, obviously, it's a bright creek, it's fine, but when is actually its full use? That's the part, you know, like when it, we have, we seem to have these 100-year storms every other day, but you know, that kind of thing.
No, that's understood.
Okay.
Is there a tripping hazard associated with that? I mean, is there other bridges to get over?
Yeah, the pointer?
Can you just announce, please? Not...
Okay. There is, well, this, this right here is steps or a walkway across, and there's also a small bridge here. Yeah. ADA access was very challenging with this, so we're very cognizant of that.
I think that's nice, there's no ADA access really for that park at this moment, at this time, yeah?
No, not, not right at the moment, no.
All right, is there any other public comment? Okay, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of authorizing receipt of bids for Fenimore Woods Park improvements, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes five to nothing with Commissioner Abel and Booker absent. Thank you very much, gentlemen. It's a very nice plan. Tammy, thank you very much, and please extend our thanks to the Parks and Rec Board as well.
I will do that. Thank you very much.
Okay, on to Resolution 2019-45, award of the 2019 Superpave Resurfacing Program, Mr. McNellis?
That would be me. This is the result of the bidding process. We respectfully request the Board of Commissioners authorize the award of the 19 paving project to Glasgow Incorporated, through the lowest responsible bidder.
May I get a motion to approve Resolution 2019-45?
So moved.
Is there any Commissioner comment? Any staff comment? Any public comment to the motion on the floor? All right, all those in favor of Resolution 2019-45, award of the 2019 Superpave Resurfacing Program, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes five to nothing with Commissioner Abel and Booker absent. Thank you very much, Mr. McNellis. Go pave the streets. Yay.
August 31st.
They'll all be done by August 31st? Great. And is there somewhere where the list of all the, I know we have it, is it posted anywhere?
We can get that up on the web. Usually, we put it up when we get their schedule. If you want it up early, we'll put it up early.
Great, great. Thank you very much. All right, Resolution 2019-46, authorizing the extension of Contract B17004, custodial services for the Radnor Township Municipal Building, Radnor Activity Center, and the Public Works Office to Clean Net USA Incorporated. Who's going to introduce this?
That would be me, me again. This is just an extension of last year's contract. It expired. There's no cost increase to the township, so it's just an extension for another year.
Can I get a motion? Can I get a motion to approve Resolution 2019-46?
So moved.
Is there any Commissioner comment? Commissioner Farhi?
Is it cheaper to contract it out, or could we do it in-house?
We tried it in-house, and it was very burdensome on the workforce. They were coming in early, there was overtime involved, and we were losing man-hours for the township jobs. And this was bid out, this is the lowest bidder from that bid.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Commissioner Nagle?
What are we doing right now since the Activity Center's out of service? Are we still, are they cleaning it regularly, or we get a discount?
We changed their routine and their coming to the Public Works Building because that was not included in the original bid, so we added that on and took the rack away from them since that's been out of commission.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comment? Any staff comment? Any public comment? Okay, all those in favor of Resolution 2019-46, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes five to nothing with Commissioner Abel and Booker absent. Resolution 2019-40, 145 King of Prussia Road, final land development plan, Brandywine Realty Trust, hotel, office, parking structure.
Can I go outside and get my group in here?
Absolutely.
Bob's calling.
Oh, it's Bob Cantor? Okay.
Okay. Mr. Nocini, do you want to introduce this, or we're good?
145 King of Prussia Road, council's here, their engineers here, have the final land development agreement with the solicitor. Should be good to go with the presentation by their council.
Okay, very good, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Kaplan.
Good evening. I think I'll spare you. We went through this two weeks ago. You know everything there is to know about it. John prepared a resolution. He attached two review letters, one, the Gannett Fleming, which is fine, and he also attached Amy's resolution. There's just one, Amy's letter, I'm sorry, there's just one glitch in Amy's list of improvements that have to be constructed, I should say, off-site traffic improvements that have to be constructed before we get an occupancy permit. All of them are fine except the last one, and that simply says that there has to be a partnership between Trilly Penn and the township in order to get the grants from PennDOT to put in the adaptive signals. Penn has committed to putting up that money if it doesn't come from the state. We just don't know when, and we don't want to be in a position where we've completed our building, all of the other improvements are in, and because something happens between PennDOT and getting the money, that we can't open our building. I don't think that that was the intent of the Penn resolution. I think that that one last item should be excluded as a condition to us getting our occupancy permit. Other than that, we're fine with everything.
So, you're talking about item number seven in Amy's, in Amy's letter?
Yeah, number, number seven...
...to install a traffic adaptive system at the following intersections?
Well, yeah, I mean, look, look at it from the top, Jack. As required under such and such resolutions, the following improvements are required prior to the applicant receiving an occupancy permit. And you go through one through six, they're all physical improvements, Penn's doing them. The last one is a partnership with Radnor Township to install traffic adaptive signal system at a series of intersections, all of them along Lancaster Avenue. And of course, this is what should be done. These are the, these are the traffic signals that work off a camera, and if there's no traffic coming on the side road, it changes the light, so it will improve the flow. I just can't see us being held up on King of Prussia Road from opening while, for whatever reason, that's not completed. So, that's, that's my only comment to the resolution.
So, I hate this, but I'm going to channel Rich Booker a little bit. Is there a mechanism...
You're going to what?
I know, I'm sorry. His concern, and it's not totally crazy, is that once the certificate of occupancy is issued, then there's nothing really that we can do to hold your feet to the fire. My question is, what mechanism would you propose in order to, and I don't think this is going to happen in all reality, but if Penn were to walk away from that portion of the deal, what's the mechanism that the township has to keep it out?
My understanding is that Penn has committed to ultimately put up the money if PennDOT does not do it. That's what I've been told by Amy, by Mike Kissinger, and I think John.
That's correct.
And that's what I understand the situation to be, because these, these seven improvements or categories of improvements, they go all the way back to when Biomed agreed to, when Biomed was going to get its improvements, it was going to get its approval. So, there's, I don't think there's any question of it getting done. I just have the one, that one item that I, we don't control, but Penn is on the hook for it.
So, seven should then become something like partnership with Radnor Township to install a traffic adaptive signal system at the following intersections, or if PennDOT permits are not available, Penn will provide sufficient funding to cause those adaptive systems to be installed when permits are issued?
Well, I, I, I think Penn has already done that. I think that number seven has to be eliminated as a contingency for our occupancy permit. I think the township will have to rely on Penn and the agreements it has with Penn that they'll either get the money from PennDOT, or Penn will put up the money, but it's a timing thing to us, because I don't know when that's going to happen. So, it just shouldn't be a contingency on our occupancy permit.
Can I, can I just interject here for a minute? Because we were, Penn Medicine, as everyone knows, is well under construction. The approval resolutions that Amy references in her letter are the Penn Medicine approval resolutions, which attached all these conditions and all the improvements, including the traffic adaptive system, to them and to their preliminary and final plan approval. So, and Amy's carried them through, so we don't forget what they all are, but they're, that one, actually, none of them, because Penn Medicine has escrowed everything but the traffic adaptive piece of it because there's grant applications. But the development agreement with Penn Medicine obligates them to do all the improvements, including the traffic adaptive improvement. So, you have it, it's not their obligation, it's Penn Medicine's obligation.
It's 948, I got confused. I get it now, thank you.
Other than that, we're good.
So, I'm just still, I just want to double check. So, you want this out of this, out of your letter, or he, this is, this is just referring back to Penn? This is just like reiterating everything that has to do with Penn?
Here's, here's, here's the way it works. John's resolution, John's resolution says that our approval is contingent on or incorporates the conditions in the two engineers' letters. Everything, we're okay with everything except this one item as being a contingency to our permit. So, you could really, the easiest thing would be to strike number seven from this, from this letter, and then it would accurately reflect what our contingencies are.
Is that what we need to do, or do we need to reflect that in the resolution? Or the, yeah, in the resolution, under number two?
You would have to revise the resolution to essentially where we incorporate Gilmore letter, you incorporate the Gilmore letter except for paragraph seven. And remember, those, those improvements, they're not, they're Penn's obligation. So, even though it's in this letter for this half, they're Penn's obligation. They've escrowed the money for everything. I mean...
And that's true, except for the four or five words that are in the introductory paragraph. The following improvements are required prior to the applicant's receiving an occupancy permit, and that's two years away from now, and we need something more explicit...
Well, Mark, let me, let me, let me finish.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I had the solution, and...
Go ahead.
Sometimes it's good to listen, so hold on a minute. Paragraph...
They've been saying that to me for 30 years.
Paragraph two should read, in the resolution, compliance with the correspondence of Gilmore dated April 1, 2019, except for...
Paragraph...
Paragraph seven, as to the traffic adaptive improvements. And that's it. Then that solves his issue. We know it's already covered under the Penn agreements and the Penn resolutions, and Penn is the one that's going to have to, they're going to have, you know, the issue if it's not done when they go to occupy, which will be before they go to occupy.
So, I'll move to amend Resolution H, number, Resolution Number 2019-40, to reflect what John just said.
Second. Well, John's going to have to change it, so.
Okay, so, is there any discussion around the amendment to the resolution? I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that. If Penn will have to have to have this done prior to them taking occupancy, so it's not even like you guys can help hold their feet to the fire to make sure this gets done. So, before they occupy, this would have to be, all right, because I want to make sure we take care of that for Rich. I don't want that to be taken care of, so. Okay, any comment on that change to the resolution, amendment to the resolution? Any staff comment to the amendment of the resolution? Any public comment to the amendment on the resolution? All right, all those in favor to amending the item two in the resolution to include or to exclude number seven from the Gilmore Associate Letter, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes five, nothing, with Commissioner Abel and Booker absent. Okay, so, back to the original, we don't have, we need to make an approval on the resolution, which, did we make a motion on that yet? I don't think we did.
I move the approval of Resolution 2019-40, as amended.
Second.
Okay, is there any additional discussion to Resolution 2019-40? Any staff comment to 2019-40? Any public comment to Resolution 2019-40? I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving Resolution 2019-41, 145 King of Prussia Road, final land development plan, Brandywine Realty Trust, hotel, office, parking structure, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes five to nothing. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Okay, on to Resolution 2019-41, Jaguar Land Rover Main Line, final preliminary, final land development plan. Mr. Nocini?
Thank you, Madam President. So, the applicants before you for a final preliminary, final land development on a roughly 3,000-square-foot expansion of the footprint, they were before you at caucus at the previous meeting. Attached is the solicitor's resolution, Gannett Fleming and Gilmore review letters, as well as the land development application. And the applicant's engineer and counsel... And the applicant's engineer and counsel are here to present.
Evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Nikhilia, representing the applicant. This plan, you've seen before in caucus, it was unanimously approved by Planning Commission. There was relief granted for size of parking spaces that were consistent with the prior approval back in 2004 for this site. And we've reviewed the conditions and the review letters are in agreement with all of them, and we would request approval of the plan.
Can I get a motion to approve Resolution 2019-41?
So moved. Second.
Is there any commissioner comment to the motion on the floor? Any staff comment to the motion on the floor? Any public comment? All right, all those in favor of Resolution 2019-41, Jaguar Land Rover Main Line Preliminary Final Land Development Plan, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes five to nothing with Commissioner Abel and Booker absent.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for hanging around for so long. Appreciate it. All right. Resolution 2019-43, flashing curve signal Conestoga Road by Mill Road. Mr. Nocini?
Thank you, Madam President. So there is, I think everybody's familiar with the existing flashing signal on westbound Conestoga Road by Mill and Radnor Way. Penn dot, the Department of Transportation contacted Radnor Township. They would like to do some safety improvements to the area, which were actually discussed with township staff, township police department, and Penn dot a few years back. That would include signage, upgrading the existing flashing warning sign, chevrons, and pavement markings will be installed on Mill Road. That would bring you out to a perpendicular at Conestoga for better turning. There will also be, this is also a real benefit, Penn dot would like to be applying the high-friction surface treatment on the curve at Mill and Radnor Avenue to help keep cars on there. So they would like to move forward with all these, but at this point, that's a very old signal. The T-160 is really a maintenance agreement between the township and Penn dot that says we will own, operate, maintain this in the fashion that they require, which is laid out in that agreement. So since there is no T-160 for this decades-old signal, they're requesting that we complete this, which has to be done by resolution, shows our ownership, and then they will move forward with the improvement sometime this summer. And if there's some sketches that become available, I would, you know, bring them forward to the manager.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve Resolution 2019-43?
So moved. Second.
Okay, is there any commissioner comment?
This, this is a long time in coming. We all remember the very serious accident at this intersection to the Dombro child. And shortly thereafter, we actually had the design for this. So it's got to be five years, Steve.
Yes, sir.
Oh, gosh, longer than that.
So I'm definitely in favor of it. That's a very bad curve, especially the high-friction surface would have probably prevented this previous accident.
Any other comments? Okay, I 100% agree with Commissioner Nagel. And so Mr. Nocini, when we have those sketches and the plans available, I would love to be able to share it with the residents on Radnor, Radnor Ave and Mill Road and probably also Tower, those, and the homes that right there on Conestoga as well.
As soon as, so Penn dot's waiting for this, I'll for, once this is appro, assuming it gets approved, as soon as I get some sketches, I'll forward them on to the manager for his dispersal to the commissioners.
Maybe we could have, maybe we could have a meeting with some of the residents, so they can come in and see. But I'm sure that any, I know that at Radnor, they've been very concerned about the people leaving, coming when they're headed, I don't know, up Conestoga towards Garrett Hill, you know, people just cutting right through. I know there's a bus stop there, they've been long concerned about the kids waiting there at the end of the street. So I think any safety improvements we can make there are, are great. Is there any additional, any other commissioner comment? Any staff comment? Any public comment to Resolution 2019-43? All right, all those in favor of Resolution 2019-43, flashing curve signal Conestoga Road by Mill Road T-160, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes five to nothing with Commissioner Abel and Booker absent. All right, Resolution 2019-42, item K, has been removed from the agenda this evening. Sorry, I forgot to mention that in the beginning of the, as there's more work still, I believe, to be done with regards to that. Mr. Nocini, you're going to be meeting with the school district on that, because I think some of this impacts the school district. So before we move forward, we'll have those meetings.
Madam President?
Yes.
If I may, if we could, if the board could move 2019-05 to your next board meeting in regards to the bamboo item?
Oh, the bamboo, certainly, did Mr. Golis have to leave? Okay, yeah. Okay, does anyone object to moving ordinance 2019-05 to our next meeting?
No.
No? Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Zinkowski, we will do that. Okay, on to item M, discussion Board of Health's recommendations regarding the regulation of gas leaf blowers. Who's taking that?
The Board of Health had some extensive conversations, at least two presentations on this. And what it comes down to, most people, when they think of this ordinance, they focus on the noise, but in fact, the engines themselves create an awful lot of pollution. So that's what they're asking, and the recommendation is we send it to planning to flesh out and have hearings on the subject. Kevin, do you have anything to add?
I think the, the Board of Health provided some general guidelines and what their thoughts on this process were. I'm not sure, you know, we could take the general concept to the Planning Commission, ask the Board of Health to make a presentation. Unfortunately, they couldn't stay for this meeting tonight. And possibly look at it in ordinance and how that would be regulated in terms of that and the impacts, and ultimately, how enforcement is done from that standpoint.
Yeah, included in the packet, for anybody that's interested, was some sample ordinances and from, and some studies that were done about this. Essentially, if you've bought your, your leaf blower since 2007, there were new rules put into place that would, those are fine. So it's, I don't think it's all that onerous, we're talking about 12 years now since that, those changes were made. So I would recommend to the board that we forward this to planning.
Does anyone have any objections to forwarding this, this to planning?
Yeah, I do. I just, I don't think that this is an issue that's, I just think this is kind of big government just stepping in, so I would be against this issue forwarding it to planning.
Can, Mr. Nagel, what was the genesis of this? Did somebody bring it forward as a concern, as a health concern, as?
I honestly don't remember whether it was a member of the public-
No, it was a member of the board.
Or a member of the board, wasn't it, gentlemen?
The health board.
Health issue from the nursing department of Villanova University.
Okay. It was a health, it was brought to us by the nursing department, one of the members of the nursing department at Villanova University. And we, I don't know if you remember, but we had two members of that staff on the Board of Health.
So what's the alternative? Everything has to be electric? Would that be?
No.
So what's the alternative?
You can still use gas, but it's got to be one that's been manufactured since 2007.
So you'd, so there'd be a fine, or there'd be, what would be?
It's, did you read the packet?
I didn't read that part.
Well, that's one of the things we're going to ask planning to flesh out as part of the public hearings. It also includes some modified time for this, doesn't it?
Correct. Currently, equipment can be operated from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and the recommendation was from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
And not on Sunday, of course.
Sundays is currently restricted.
Right.
You know, I'm, I'm willing to move it forward, you know, for planning to vet it out. I'm concerned about, you know, putting so many restrictions, you know, not letting people do that on a Sunday, mow their lawns and blow their leaves. Yeah. I'm just thinking about-
People are going to mow their lawn on Sunday.
That's like the only days my husband has to do that kind of work, so. And he better be doing it, that's all I have to say.
We'll go back to the ones that spun.
What happened to our kids? And now my, now my kids are gone, who's going to rake the leaves? You know, I have no problem moving this on to the Board of, or to the Planning Commission for them to vet it out and have community, you know, input into the process, and we'll see what they come up with. Is there anyone who objects besides Sean? All right, then I hear consensus of the board to move it forward to planning. Thank you for bringing it forward, Commissioner Nagel. Considerations, okay, on item N, consideration to forward the petition from Hampshire Family Partnership amending Chapter 280 of the Radnor Township Code zoning ordinance by establishing regulations for allowing rooftop dining within the Wayne Business Overlay District to the Township Planning Commission and/or other township boards, commissions, and committees for review and comment. Okay. Good evening again.
Nikhilia. Have the three brothers sitting here. You know, I think a lot of you know them. Radnor family grew up in Radnor, had a bar restaurant in Radnor, moved out and loved Wayne so much, moved back, how many years ago now, I guess, at, at Great American Pub. The concern, and this isn't only a concern with the Hemshires, we've spoken to Representative Wayne Business Association also, is that Wayne's being bypassed by these other towns now, the Valley Forge Town Center, Phoenixville, now you see Bryn Mawr and Ardmore, and even Trudifer in Easttown, doing these town centers and doing more modern developments. The purpose of this ordinance hopefully is to, again, revitalize Wayne with a rooftop dining ordinance. If any of you have been in Conshohocken, and certainly are welcome, the Hemshires do, did provide rooftop dining recently at their location in Conshohocken, and we invite you to go, because it's gorgeous, really, an aid to the community and, and an aid to the businesses there in Conshohocken, and we're actually hoping that the same occurs here. What we have prepared is an ordinance, it includes a lot of the protections that are already in the Wayne Business Overlay District, as well as the outdoor dining regulations that appear in the ordinance itself. There's a number of safeguards, limiting the rooftop dining only to buildings that do not have residential type use, that it would be limited to the actual structure of the current buildings, could not be expanded beyond that, limitations on hours of operation, limitations on how close to residential districts it may be located, and limitation on number of seats, how to provide parking, which obviously is a big concern in Wayne. And the ordinance provides that if you're going to have the rooftop dining, you have to have valet service and the parking lots that would be used. And if any of you go to Wayne on a regular basis, you notice that there's two base, two parking lots that really are not used in, very frequently in Wayne right now. One being the lot, I guess they call it the Bellevue Lot, which is a lot across from White Dog. You can go in there probably at any time, even at the busiest times on Friday and Saturday nights, and always find plenty of parking. And also, the lot down on South Wayne, across from the middle school, is also always available from a parking standpoint. So in addition to providing the valet service, they would also be providing some remuneration to the township for the use of those parking spaces as well. We would recommend, hopefully, that the board do, does what's necessary here, if it's referred to Planning Commission, have a public hearing, or whatever the board deems appropriate to move the ordinance forward, and to get both public opinion on it, as well as the opinion of the various boards and of the commissioners themselves.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nikhilia.
And the Hemshires are here to answer any questions. It's, it's a big economic undertaking to do this, because obviously, they have to fortress the building itself. They have to comply with all health and safety code regulations, and we're talking a substantial sum of money in order just to make the building fit to be able to do this. And as I mentioned, if you went to Conshohocken, you'd see what a nice job was done over there in that, in that restaurant.
The Conshohocken facility is very nice, I've been there, so. So you'd have to be doing construction, I mean, is the building suited for, for this right now?
Why don't you guys?
Can you guys see to the-
Just need to make sure they come up to the mic.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, Mark Hemsher, how are you?
Hi. So the, you would have to be doing significant construction, I guess, in order to accommodate this on the roof?
Yes, we, we have to have the architect, engineer come in, and we did the same thing in Conshohocken. A lot of the cost was making sure, you know, the roof per pound, you know, per square foot, and that's, that's the first step. You know, the architect comes in, and it's, it's, it's very, you know, advanced, it, it would take a lot of, a lot of time and a lot of work, you know, if you get the approval to move forward, so.
And it has to be ADA accessible, too, so it has to be an elevator, it has to be accessed by another-
There'd be an elevator, steps out the back, you know, so.
Does anyone have any questions, or?
Just, just one quick, I, I think it's a great idea. It makes you more competitive with all the other restaurants out there. The only concern, and I know that I brought that, this up to you, is just the hours of operation. I know that you're not going to be serving Bloody Marys at 8:00 a.m., but 12:00 p.m. may be too late, based on noise, or, you know, not that it's going to be some rowdy party or light. Just if you could kind of revisit that, or-
Sure.
-maybe start, maybe say it's, is it going to be more for dining or more for congregation? Would be my question.
It's more for dining.
So then maybe something like, you know, your last meal is at, setting is at 8:00 o'clock, and then you would have them be finished hopefully by 9:00, and if that's going well, we can definitely revisit that and make it later if the neighbors don't complain. Just to-
Sure.
That's the only suggestion, but I think it looks good.
We'll have a discussion on that.
Yeah, sure.
Any other questions? Do we have consensus of the board to move this forward to, to planning, for them to consider and have public hearings on and consensus? Okay. Take it to planning, gentlemen.
Thank you very much for your time.
Sounds like a great idea. Thank you, and thank you for waiting until the bitter end.
Thank you very much.
Madam President, if I may, I'd just like to commend the Hampshire family and the great American Pub of what a true neighbor they are in the Wayne Business Association area, North Wayne. The way they maintain their business, the way they take care of it, the way they keep it clean, there's no other business up there that has actually paved the lot, striped it, pressure washes it, cleans it. They are an example of, of really what, what a great business is, and I just want to thank them for, for being here and what they do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you so much. These guys are very proud of being-
They're a great Radnor family, absolutely, absolutely. All right, anything for public safety? Anything for, so I will just say for the library, I just want to congratulate and recognize Helen McGreen, and maybe we can do something to recognize her at a future meeting. Helen stepped down as president of the library's Board of Trustees this week, and they found two wonderful replacements, but they had to find two to replace her. As you know, Helen has overseen the, the library board during the time of their capital campaign and the construction of the new library, and certainly, you know, she has left in a wonderful legacy for the, the township, and I think I just want to congratulate her again here on TV, because she's done a wonderful job. I think we should all commend her for her fine work. Anything for public health? I think we talked about, okay. Is there any new business this evening? Any old business? All right, I just want to, so I will just, the last thing before we have last public participation, I know that the Wheels of Wayne was yesterday, I think Commissioner Nagel, you went, did anyone else go? Did you go, Luke? Yeah, I was, I didn't, I was unable to attend, but I heard it was a wonderful event. I'm sorry that Tammy has left already, I should have said this at the top of the meeting, but again, congratulations to our staff. I know everyone works really hard, from public works to our police, to certainly our- I know everyone works really hard from public works to our police to certainly our, you know, recreation, community programming and recreation department, as well as the rest of our staff who all pitch in. So, great job.
Well, in that line, I talked to several of the people who owned the vehicles that were there and they all raved about the event. Normally, car shows are in parking lots or out on, in parks. And literally, you sit in the sun all day while the thing's going on or, but the Wheels of Wayne, you have all the restaurants there and the bars and depending on the time of the day, you can find a shady spot. And it's interesting, I'd say about half of the cars I'd seen before and the other half. And that's what I've noticed over the years. There's a consistent element that comes back all the time and then a bunch of other folks that will come every couple of years. A lot of beautiful vehicles, a lot of money.
Lisa?
Well, great. Yes?
Can I just remind everyone that tomorrow's primary date to go out to vote? And also at 7:1, 7:2, I will have collection bins for food, canned goods, and toiletries. And I will be making that as a donation to the Veterans Group, which is a shelter for homeless vets in Philadelphia.
Thank you. Anyone else? If anyone had? All right. No, last public comment. Is there any public comment for last public comment? Going once, going twice. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn? I have a second?
Yep.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you all very much. Good evening.